Good evening. My name is James Kane. I have the distinct privilege to serve as your moderator for this special town meeting. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to our special town meeting. To ensure good order, tellers, please raise your hands so that all town meeting members can see you. All town meeting members should have their stickers clearly displayed so that all can see. Town meeting members are asked to sit downslope of the tellers toward me. Only town meeting members should be on this side of the tellers unless they are provided with specific permission by the moderator. Residents wishing to witness this evening are asked to sit upslope of the tellers in the rear seating. All department heads are asked to sit to my lower left so as to be in a convenient location to answer any questions if one is asked. By way of reminder, our town meeting has a long and proud tradition of civil discourse and orderly debate. No outbursts in support or opposition of a member's comments or vote are allowed. Once underway, a town meeting member wishing to be recognized is asked to await my clear recognition and proceed to a microphone. If you are unable to move to a microphone, one will be brought to you. Once at the microphone, please clearly state your name and precinct and then proceed with your question. In order to ensure that all of your colleagues have an opportunity to speak, please limit your initial question to one and one follow-up if needed. Please hold additional questions until all others have been able to speak and ask their own. Rest assured, you will be recognized before we move on. At this time, I'd like to recognize those to my right, Town Clerk Sharon Thomas and Town Council Steven Madouse. Our finance committee is further to my right, and I will ask its Chair Vikram to introduce himself and his colleagues.
From left to right, on the tables, on the stage and on the floor, the office chairs, myself, Vikram Chabra Chair, Jim Flynn Vice Chair, Diana Bowley Clerk, Jean Buttonhagen, Brian Ganger, Melinda Knitker, Rajesh Veligapuri and David Remington.
Thank you very much. To my left, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar and Chair of the Select Board John Samia, who I'll ask to introduce himself and his colleagues.
Good evening, town meeting members. To my left is Vice Chair Teresa Flynn, and on the table down below facing you from right to left, Carlos Garcia Member, Michelle Conlin Clerk and Beth Cassavant Member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With the introductions complete, let's get underway. Our town meeting operates under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, bylaws of the Town of Shrewsbury and the town meeting time. I've examined the warrant and the constable's return and service, and both are in order. I ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and constable's return. Hearing no objections, so voted unanimously. To the town meeting warrant, each town meeting member should have received a full packet of information related to this special town meeting. As we walk through the warrant and debate articles placed on the warrant by the Board of Selectmen, I will call the article. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board will move the printed or substitute motion and second it prospectively. I will then ask the Finance Committee for its recommendation. Mr. Mizikar will then provide a crisp succinct description of the article. Let us move on. Article one.
I move the printed motion under Article one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends Article one by a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. Mr. Mizikar.
Article one seeks to appropriate from taxation fifteen thousand dollars for the costs associated with the Town of Shrewsbury's 300th Celebration that will occur in 2027. These funds differ from the funds deposited into the 300th Centennial Celebration Fund because they will be immediately available for use by the committee, whereas the previously appropriated funds seven and twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to Article one? Not hearing or seeing any, and this requiring a majority vote, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Article two.
I move the printed motion under Article two.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends Article two by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
Article one seeks to make critical adjustments, I'm sorry. Article two seeks to make critical adjustments to the fiscal year 25 operating budget totaling one million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars or 0.74 percent of the FY 25 budget passed at the Maytown Meeting. These adjustments were made across eight different departments as printed in your book and shown in brief on the screen. I'll provide a couple outlines to those adjustments. There's a ten thousand dollar increase to the Treasurer Collector's Office reflecting expenses with the town's tax title process for fiscal years eighteen through twenty-two. Five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase to the operating support health insurance line item. There are two key drivers behind this needs. A net increase of thirty-eight total subscribers across school and municipal departments and a six point five percent increase across the retiree health insurance plan premiums. There's a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar proposed increase for the fire department salaries and wages due to covering shift backfields for three firefighters on long-term leave. Five hundred thousand dollar increase to the pension contribution to address prior year market losses and maintain satisfactory funding levels for the system. Fifty thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars in an interdepartmental transfer from the Department of Public Works to the Town Manager as we centralized the procurement management position. Fifty thousand dollar increase to the town streetlight budget based upon the electricity rate increase that went into effect on September 2024. And finally, a hundred thousand dollar increase to the education budget to support electrical and security upgrades within school buildings.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article two? Have any comments or questions with reference to Article two? Yes. Did you just wait for a microphone, Brandon? Here you go.
Thanks. I'm from Precinct Three. My name is Francis Manella. I have a question regarding Item Two in the budget, the health insurance. I didn't get the split between how much of this five hundred and eighty-five is retirees' benefits and how much is associated with additional enrollments. I'm hard to, hard to see for me.
He's looking it up.
So a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is associated with the Medicare renewal and the balance is due to new enrollments.
Rather than have three questions, there's three things I'd like to ask about this. When you say that this is increased funding to offset prior year market losses, why do we have to do that? Is that because we're a defined contribution type plan? We have to make it whole?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article two? Not seeing or hearing any, we'll move to a vote. This requires a majority. All those in favor of Article two shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're unanimous. Article three.
I move the printed motion under Article three.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article three by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
Article three proposes to make amendments to the FY 25 Capital Improvement Plan by appropriating funding for two vehicles, one new vehicle for the fire department and a replacement police cruiser.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article three? Article three, not hearing or seeing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of Article three shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're unanimous. We'll now move to Article four, which you folks will see on a yellow piece of paper as a substitute motion. Mr. Samia.
I move the substitute motion under Article four.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends the substituted motion for Article four by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
This article with the substitute printed motion seeks to deposit three hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars into Special Purpose Override Stabilization Fund. These funds will be reserved for future appropriation by Town Meeting to fund the operation of the municipal and education departments.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article four? Yes, sir.
Patrick Pitney, Precinct Five. I just have a question on the balance on the override stabilization account. The original motion was for three hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight. The substituted is for three fifty-eight. Yet the balance as of ten twenty-four is the same. Could you account for the difference of ten thousand dollars?
Mr. Snowden.
Are you referring to the balance in the description in the warrant here that says nine million one hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and
Yes, sir.
That is the current balance without this appropriation.
Okay.
The total balance would be, I don't have that. One second. Right there.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions on the substitute motion in Article four? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll move to a vote. It's requiring a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article four is approved. Article five?
I move the printed motion under Article five.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article five by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article seeks to appropriate twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty cents that the town has received from the State's Transportation Infrastructure Fund to be used for sidewalk, crosswalk and pedestrian mobility initiatives or other programs to support alternative modes of transportation.
Comments or questions with reference to Article five? Comments, questions, Article five. Not hearing or seeing any, requiring a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Now move to Article six.
I move the printed motion under Article six.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article six by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Moderator, I'd request that presentation be led this evening by Building Committee Chair Patrick Pitney.
Mr. Pitney.
Can you hear me? Okay, there we are. Good evening. My name is Patrick Pitney. I'm Chair of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee, which was established by the Select Board to address critical space and repair needs at 205 to 11 South Street and Town Hall. Recognizing the urgency of these issues, the Select Board allocated ARPA funds to support a feasibility study and conceptual design for this important project. Our team, including Committee Members Steve Walsh, Mike Girberti, Beth Cassavant and Keith Baldinger, along with our project partners, Owners Project Manager Vertex Incorporated, Designer HKA and Department of Public Works Staff, has been hard at work developing a sustainable, efficient and most importantly, functional solution to address the building condition and space needs at both locations. This has included fifteen duly posted public meetings. Eight of these meetings have broadcast on SMC, and we hope you have been able to follow along as we have gone about our work. From the outset, we prioritized function over form as the guiding principle for this project. The current facilities are severely outdated and inadequate for modern operations, yet they house essential services that impact every resident, business and visitor in our community. These DPW functions include the highway, parks and cemetery, water and sewer, fleet maintenance, engineering and public buildings divisions. In this presentation, you'll see how this project also addresses the space needs of DPW administration, currently located on the second floor of Town Hall. By relocating those functions, we create an opportunity to alleviate space constraints faced by municipal and school departments at Town Hall while addressing critical upgrades such as HVAC, life safety and accessibility improvements. The Committee firmly believes this approach is the most tactical and fiscally responsible path forward for the town. We have been committed to transparency throughout this process. In addition to the public meetings I have previously mentioned, we held public tours of the buildings, which many attended, and managed a dedicated page on the Town Website for this project. Tonight, through this article, we are requesting Town Meeting support to appropriate funds for completing sixty percent design documents for both locations. This phase will refine the project details and budget, preparing us for a full funding request at a Town Meeting this coming spring. Now I'll turn it over to Keith Baldinger, who will provide more details on our work and recommendations. Thank you.
Town meeting members, I just draw your attention to the handout that was provided in your packet. Mr. Baldinger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. As Mr. Pitney stated, the Committee was established to address critical space and repair needs at 205 and 211 South Street at Town Hall. DPW facilities at South Street are the most deteriorated and undersized of all town facilities. The water and sewer garage, built in the nineteen fifty's and renovated in nineteen seventy-eight when the highway garage was added, has reached the end of its useful life. The building conditions hinder effective service delivery for our residents and businesses and impact our ability to support our dedicated employees. The facilities lack space to meet staff needs in basic functional areas, such as bath and shower facilities, break rooms, training areas, bunk spaces and office areas. They also have outdated and inefficient heating and cooling systems and lack air exchange systems to improve air quality. The water and sewer garage not only lacks adequate staff space but also cannot accommodate the division's equipment and supplies, further hindering operations. Although the highway garage, built in nineteen seventy-eight, remains structurally sound and has stood the test of time, it requires updates to meet modern operational needs. Early in this process, it was determined that renovating this facility would provide significant cost savings to the community. The water and sewer garage, built in nineteen fifty's, is in poor condition. A structural review confirmed that renovating this building would qualify as a Level Three alteration under the Mass State Building Code, requiring costly seismic bracing and upgrades. The conditions assessment determined that it would be more cost-effective to demolish and build a new facility rather than renovate or add-on. The Town Hall renovation project reflects the community's clear feedback against expanding the building and aligns with the desire to maximize the current footprint. By optimizing existing space and improving functionality, this project addresses critical needs without the added expense of expansion. Importantly, this will be the first major repair and upgrade at Town Hall since nineteen ninety-seven, continuing the town's legacy of maintaining its facilities for decades of service. The renovation focuses on three main areas. Replacing the aging HVAC system in the original part of the building, which is now beyond its useful life. The new system will be electrified, improving climate control, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and aligning with the town's sustainability goals. The second area is addressing life safety. The original section of Town Hall is currently unsprinkled. A new fire sprinkler system will be installed in this area of the building, and the fire lamp system dating back to nineteen ninety-seven will be fully updated to meet modern safety standards. The third area is proving ADA accessibility, ensuring building code compliance. This includes renovating all six bathrooms, four of which are original to nineteen sixty-six, and implementing other inclusivity improvements identified in the 2022 ADA Transition Plan. Additional work includes reconfiguring spaces to maximize efficiency, enhance conference areas and create a secure storage solutions. These renovations will touch nearly every area of the building and require significant asbestos mitigation. By addressing these critical needs, this project not only ensures Town Hall's compliance with current standards but also prepares it to meet the needs of the community for decades to come. Integrating DPW functions currently housed at Town Hall into the South Street site will promote operational efficiency and improve resident access to services across all town departments. This strategic move eliminates longstanding space challenges and costly additions to Town Hall aligning with community feedback. The town has a proven history of maintaining its buildings for over fifty years as demonstrated at both locations under consideration. These planned changes focused on functionality, energy efficiency and sustainability will extend the building's useful lives while making them future-ready to meet evolving needs. We work closely with the team to ensure this conceptual design is functional and meets the programming and efficiency needs of the DPW divisions. The South Street design underwent multiple iterations to balance fiscal responsibility with the growing demands of DPW operations. This concept optimizes Town Hall and reflects community feedback against expansion. In 2020, the municipal campus feasibility study proposed a twelve to fifteen million dollar Town Hall expansion. In contrast, this five point five million dollar optimization takes a fiscally responsible approach by focusing solely on essential improvements. Through this article, we request that Town Meeting appropriate funds to complete sixty percent design documents for the DPW campus and Town Hall. This phase will refine project details, confirm the budget and prepare us for a full funding request at Town Meeting this coming spring. In this next phase, we aim to address the critical infrastructure needs of both facilities, ensuring functionality, efficiency and sustainability. This approach mirrors the town's proven process for prior capital projects such as the police station, Beale Elementary School, public library and Sherwood Middle School. By investing in detailed planning, we have consistently ensured fiscal responsibility, meaningful community engagement and a clear path to delivering well-designed facilities on time and within budget. With your support, we can continue this track record and position these critical buildings to serve the town efficiently for decades to come. This slide illustrates how the two million dollar requested in Article six will be allocated. Architects' fees, one point four nine million dollars. Owners' project manager fees, two hundred thousand dollars. In construction manner at risk, pre-construction fee of two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The funding will come from two sources. Previously borrowed funds from the police station project of three hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and free cash at one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. This appropriation is an investment in Shrewsbury's future. Combining fiscal responsibility with a practical improvements necessary to serve our community efficiently well into the future. I will now turn it over to Assistant Town Manager Dave Stone to explain the total project cost breakout.
Excellent. To ensure that Town Meeting has provided the opportunity to understand the full scope of this project, I'd like to walk through the figures that we see here tonight. The research and work completed to date estimates that a total cost of the project will be thirty-two point five million dollars, which includes the design costs requested here tonight. We can further break this project out by location. First, at the DPW garage located at South Street, and then second, Town Hall at Hundred Maple Ave. Looking at this chart, if we start with the DPW garage, this component is projected to cost twenty-seven million dollars. Sixteen point two million of this expense will be funded through utility rates and the remaining ten point eight million will be funded through the general fund by a means of a debt exclusion. New construction will amount to approximately twenty-one point five million while renovations will run approximately five point five million. The utility expenses have been incorporated into the adopted water and sewer financial models which project a eleven dollar and forty-six cent per quarter increase to the average residential customer for their water and sewer bill combined. Looking at the chart again, if we return to Town Hall, it's estimated that the expenses will run five point five million as previously stated by Mr. Baldinger. Next slide, please. All right. With an understanding of the projected total costs, I'd like to now look at some of the details and how they relate to the tax impact of this project. This current figure represents a projected tax rate impact for the average single-family home. Using FY twenty-four values, the average single-family home in Shrewsbury is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and sixteen, which equates to an annual tax bill of eight thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. The purple line above the shaded blue area represents the impact of the Town Hall project on the average single-family tax bill. The orange line represents the DPW project impact on the average single-family tax bill. And then finally, the dotted line represents the total impact of both of those projects on the tax bill. You'll see in the blue text is the current tax impact and then the green text with the dotted line represents what the total impact would be. By utilizing debt service that's rolling off the books, both the DPW garage and Town Hall projects can be introduced without increasing the tax bill. The peak impact is projected for FY twenty-eight at a hundred and twenty dollars and twelve cents annual, of which seventy-eight dollars and eight cents is associated with the DPW garage and forty-two dollars and four cents is related to the Town Hall. The total tax bill will not increase over the current year due to this project. Next slide, please. All right. I appreciate having the opportunity to run through the total estimated costs for the Municipal Facilities Optimization Project. As previously stated, the purpose of Article six is to authorize the use of available funding for the design costs related to the DPW and Town Hall Optimization Project. In total, Article six seeks the appropriation of two million in funds already on hand. One million six hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-four in free cash and three hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six from the completed police station project.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions with reference to Article six?
Hear me? Oops, sorry. Caroline May Cumber, Precinct Nine. I just had a question regarding how that last slide that showed our taxes going down, how that can even be put up on the screen because wouldn't that be based on an assumption that our home values go down since that's how taxes are assessed on residents?
Mr. Mizikar.
On the screen is only the portion of taxes associated with debt service. So the way we structure our debt is level principal and declining debt service. So this is accurate, that the part of your tax bill that's associated with debt service will decline year over year. Has nothing to do with your home values.
Okay, so we should expect to start paying less taxes then, if I'm reading the slide correctly and understanding what you said?
For the debt service portion that makes up your tax bill, yes.
Okay, but if home values continue to rise, we could still see increasing tax bills as single-family homeowners, even though the portion of that tax bill related to this is technically going down. I'm not trying to like...
Sure, no, I understand.
I just want to make sure I understand it.
Your taxes will likely go up because of the operating part of the budget, right? Proposition two and a half allows us to increase the tax levy by two and a half percent year over year. That is not any part of what's on the screen right now because this is excluded. So that's above and beyond Proposition two and a half. So year over year, will your taxes likely go up? Yes. Will they go up because of debt service? No, right? Not under the proposed plan or the existing debt service that the town is responsible for.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess, I don't really know if this is a question more is, we're looking to spend two million dollars on design and we haven't yet voted to spend $2 million on design, and we haven't yet voted that we want to actually approve the debt service request that's going to be coming in the spring. So wouldn't it make sense to approve a $2 million ask to fund the design, once we know that the town actually wants to approve $32 million of spending for these upgrades?
Mr. Mizuka?
Normally, the town has always requested full design and a complete understanding of the cost before taking on debt service. When you vote to authorize debt, it is put on the town's financial records, and we have the ability to borrow those funds. So it would not be advisable, both from an understanding of all the residents and voters, to ask them that question without having a fully designed project.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, the last question was, did we look at separating out this article so that the DPW garage and the Town Hall were looked at separately? And then also, I'm just thinking, because we're at Oak Middle School, I know Oak was also built in 1953 and in fact has mold in it. I was backstage last week helping with the school play, and there's mold in the costume closet. So have we looked at other aging buildings in town? And how did we sort of look at the hierarchy of which ones should be upgraded and renovated first?
Mizuka?
Sure. So we do not propose separating those two things out. We feel that it is most efficient to move forward with the design of these projects simultaneously, as they're mutually beneficial. And with regards to capital planning for long-term, yes, we have gone through all of our buildings. Just recently, the schools have invested in a significant study at the end of the Beal project to review each and every building, come up with a prioritized list. They have identified their top priority right now to be the expansion of the high school. And on the municipal side, all buildings have been looked at and reviewed with the select board, and this is our recommendation for those buildings in greatest need.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Yes. Just one second, she's coming down.
Louise Garone, Precinct Eight. Point of clarification, something I don't understand. I noticed that a 5% contingency built into the $2 million. What does that 5% recommend? And will there also be a similar contingency in the overall $32.5 million project?
Mr. Mizuka?
Mr. Baldinger could best...
Mr. Baldinger.
So 5% contingency is typical for all of our projects, to make sure that we're covered, we're coming under budget and covered any overruns that we may run into.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Yes.
Hi, Melanie Petrucci, Precinct One. Just a question is, are there any capital projects that are coming off the books?
Mr. Mizuka?
Yes. There are capital projects coming off the books, and that's why you see the debt service declining year over year. I can tell you specifically what those are. The fire station headquarters construction, final year of repayment is the current year, fiscal year, well, is, let me start at the top. The Oak Middle School renovation, $7.4 million project from 2004, fiscal year '25, the current year is the last year that that's in repayment. And then the fire headquarters facilities that was done will have a final payment year of 2026. And those are the two largest projects that we'll complete funding on. And then, the balance of those differences is because, again, we hold our principal payment the same, so we minimize our interest payments. So if you look at a project just like Beal for that major borrowing, we'll start to pay about $100,000 per year, less in interest year over year. So that's what makes up the difference. That's what's quote-unquote "going away" from our debt service responsibilities.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Please.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct Seven. So the way this is written sort of still isn't lining up for me, the way that it's drafted, because we're going to be asked to take on more debt to expand the high school. We're going to be asked to take on more debt to deal with all these other things in town. So saying that the debt service is part of the tax bill is going to go down doesn't really count for the fact that the select board and the town is going to come to us again in next year or the year after, asking us to take on more debt to cover other things in town. Is that fair to say?
Mr. Mizuka?
Well, I mean, the only other project that's potentially under consideration is the high school. So if the MSBA were to accept the town into it, at some point in the coming fiscal year, you would begin the design process for this. We have laid out a long-range financial plan that ensures two-year gaps between borrowing or Proposition Two and a Half override requests of the community. We understand that during the 2019 to 2022, there were significant tax increases that occurred from the Beal project, the police station project, and the override. And the board has committed in our financial planning process to make sure the projects in the future and operational overrides are more spaced out. But if we do take on a high school project in a future year, yes, you would see debt from that project. At this point, you know, MSBA projects take about six years to bring to fruition. So this is fiscal year '25. You would likely see a debt impact associated with that in fiscal year 2029, if it keeps going forward and MSBA gives us the thumbs up this December.
Okay. And then those are currently the highest years listed on this chart, if I'm reading it correctly, right? So it's going to be a couple of years right in the middle where it's particularly high. That's what I wanted to kind of get into, but I have a separate question to follow up.
Sure, 2028 is the highest year.
Follow up?
Yep. Okay, the other question that I had was, how much money is left over from the Beal project and the police station?
There's no remaining funds from the Beal project at this point. Those were all rededicated to other capital investments, mainly the cemetery and the Oak Middle School window project. And then, the only remaining funds from the police station is the 363 that's being requested for use here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Further comments or questions? Yes.
Missing Hollenbeck, Precinct Nine. I spent a lot of time in a lot of different DPW and water and sewer buildings. Ours is really kind of at the end of its life and has been for a while, especially as we move into, you know, the 21st century. Oh, yeah, we've been in here for a while. With a lot of new equipment, the town has grown, there's substantially more equipment. So there's not a doubt in my mind that we need something done with those buildings, something that needs to be more than just slapping on a little, you know, roof or something. But what I'm asking is, when you go through this study, is there possibly an option A and an option B? The option A is like all the great things that we really want, maybe a scaled-down version. An option B, because like everyone's kind of mentioning, the tax situation is going to be a big consideration for people, especially, you know, recently with the police station, but in other taxes we've had to overrides. So, you know, kind of already hedging her bets, like, you know, an A and B kind of, you know, cheaper model.
Mr. Mizuka?
It's certainly something that the committee can take on in the design process to ensure that the requests are only, you know, what is absolutely needed. And if there's any alternatives that make sense, given the investment, we can provide that information.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Mr. Cray?
Robert Cray from Precinct Two. I'll try to stay on task here. Looking at other projects that are coming online, I'm looking at the PFAS Treatment Plant project. And the last meeting I attended, I thought I saw some really gaudy budget numbers and borrowing numbers for that project. Proposed to go online in 2027? Town website? Thank you. Do we know when that's going on, and how's it going to impact that chart? Please.
Mr. Mizuka?
So those impacts are included within our calculations. The PFAS Treatment Plant is currently under design, and we hope to get, start construction this coming spring. It will take 18 to 24 months to construct. But those are within the parameters of the financial plan and what we've presented this evening.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Gentleman on the aisle.
Ed Bolter, Precinct One. Just a couple of things on the, how, was this design awarded to the same company to do both projects?
Yes.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
Yep. And as a result of that, did we get any kind of favorable discount for volume?
Well, we went through a competitive bid process, and, you know, during that process, we selected the most advantageous proposer for the design, as were required to under the general laws, and negotiated the best fee that we could. So the scope of work was known.
Got it. And then, there's another, I don't know, $1.3 or $1.4 million in design after this, once you've done kind of the preliminary to understand the total cost impact? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Yes.
Hi, I'm Sanam Zaire, Precinct Seven. I'm curious, when the new police station was built, I know that there was some talk about doing, including the Town Hall in that, and I'm curious if there was any discussion about building a more modest police center and including Town Hall in that project, instead of doing it separately, and what the mindset was of building a significantly large police station, when there was, it seems like there was awareness that multiple municipal facilities needed an upgrade.
Mr. Mizuka?
Sure. The police station was designed for the sole needs of the police department over the course of the next 50 years. So at the time, there was consideration of every building on the municipal campus, and since the funding was being requested, the police station was prioritized, and it was the only project that moved forward. So the difference between what was proposed originally for the Town Hall and what is being proposed now is about $10 million less, right? So this is just a renovation, mainly life safety, hazardous, hazmat mitigation, and ADA accessibilities. It is not an expansion. So the scope of work is completely different from the Town Hall, but the police station, you know, was built to meet the needs solely of the police department for the next 50 years.
Follow up?
I don't think it's on. Oh. My, I guess my question, just to clarify a little bit, was, was there consideration to scale back the police project in order to account for some of these? The reason is because it seems like a disproportionately large municipal building compared to some of our other ones, when there's a clear need to upgrade all of them. So I guess I'm wondering if there was an awareness at the time, if there was consideration to scale back at the time? And I guess if that's status quo moving forward with some of the upgrades? I don't know if that question...
Mr. Mizuka?
Sure, I'll try. So I don't think that there was any excess in the police station. We certainly know that having well over a million square feet of municipal building space, that there's always going to be capital needs and investments will be required. Again, looking at, you know, the debt that's on the books and what the Town Hall needs, you know, we feel it's a very modest approach to that project. And I also don't think the police station was overbuilt. The police station has the most number of employees out of any department, except for the Department of Public Works. You know, there's over 70 staff that work for the police department at this point. So I know it's a large building, but it's a critical and large part of our operations.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Right on the aisle.
Tony Bonaventura, Precinct Four. So I have a couple of concerns. One concern is grouping all of these together really doesn't give the legislative branch a chance to really have a choice. So with that, in this $2 million ask for design, really, if we vote the $2 million ask, it's pretty hard to step back from that. If it goes out for a vote to the town and the town doesn't want it, we're kind of out $2 million with multiple projects. Is there any comment about that?
Mr. Mizuka?
I'll just say that's accurate.
Follow up?
Yeah, so for that reason, I have trouble with this. I think that there might be a better way to do this. We've had quite a few buildings, this generation of folks have paid for quite a few buildings in the last few years. And there was a chart up there about average single-family tax bills. Historically, for the last three decades, we've ranked at about the 140th highest average single-family tax bill in the state. Over the last seven years, we've gone from the 140th up to the 90th. So now we're the 90th highest average single-family tax bill in the state. And that equates to, if you look at the average single-family tax bill in 2017, it was 5,200, and now it's 8,200 approximately. So it's a $3,000 increase. There's been a heavy burden on especially folks in the more moderate range of household income in the town, and I'm very concerned about that. So I did tour these buildings. One building's in great shape, the other one's older, but, you know, I question some of the maintenance to this point. I think it could have gone on for quite a bit longer, because it is garage space. And the reasons given were all things that probably could have been mitigated. I'm not saying forever, but for several years, and maybe we only look at a more modest approach, rather than one size fits all and makes it very difficult on the legislative branch to vote on this or against it. That's my comments.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Carol?
Hi, Carol Swedean, Precinct Six. I took a tour of the facility, and I couldn't believe the shape it was in. The roof was leaking in practically every part of that building. One of the people that runs the place is sitting in an office, and his, the roof is leaking in his office. They can't eat, they don't have a private room to eat or have conferences, they do everything in the garage. So it really needs to be, it really needs to be done. I know, I couldn't work in that environment.
Thank you. Along the aisle, John?
I wasn't going to make any comments about it, but I guess I will.
Name and precinct, John?
Oh, I'm sorry. John Segelnik, Precinct Two. I'm a pole worker in Precinct Five, which is in the sewer department garage. So several times a year, I get to spend a day in there. A couple of years ago, we, it was raining during the elections, and as the previous speak said, it was leaking, the backside of the building was leaking, and it was leaking right down near the electrical panel. And we were all panicking, because we were concerned that if the electricity went out, people wouldn't be able to vote. But that's an aside story. I guess my question is in regard to the design. Are the gas tanks included in the redesign? Are we going to do new gas tanks? Or are we going to continue with the gas tanks that we have? And if so, what do we think the useful life of those gas tanks are?
Mr. Mizuka?
Mr. Baldinger.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes, part of the feasibility study found that the existing fuel tanks are pretty close to their end of life, so the new project will include above-ground storage tanks for both diesel and gasoline.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Mr. Byrne? Byrne, yes. If you could have a microphone, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Kevin Byrne. Mr. Moderator, that's Byrne, B-Y-R-N-E. And I'm in Precinct Six. I've been in Precinct Six since Virginia and I moved to Shrewsbury, believe it or not, in nineteen sixty-seven. Now, that's six, seven. We're still in the same bloody house. Well, it's a little larger. It's substantially larger than it was then. And anyway, the only reason I share that with you is that at that time, when we moved to Shrewsbury, Elma Circle hadn't been completed. Half of it was dirt, unpaved. The population of Shrewsbury at that time was approximately sixteen to eighteen thousand people. Today, it is thirty-eight thousand plus. The improvements that have been made in our community over the course of that time in terms of infrastructure, the work done by DPW, all that stuff has been, you know, absolutely miraculous and it's been done well. I know, I look at Facebook every so often and there are a lot of people who say, no, they're still not picking, picking up my rubbish on time. Okay, there we are. I had the opportunity as a lawyer, this goes back three or four years. I know many of you vote there, but the last time I was in that building three or four years ago, and the reason is, I had a client who works for the town of Shrewsbury and he was there, and we needed to exchange papers. He said, well, you know, it's a little hard for me to get in the office. I said, I live right in the center of town. I said, I'll drop him down there. And I went down there two or three times. This is three or four years ago. The place was a disaster, a complete disaster. The buildings were falling apart. There was no organization to the whole thing. And this has been overdue for a substantial number of years, if anybody's been, those of you aren't in the voting ranks down there. We just have to do it. Costs are going to continue to rise. We, we all understand that. But tying it in with the town hall improvements came at a fascinating time because what's going to happen is all of those folks who are on the second floor of the town hall are going out and they're all going to be going down to South Street. And it's a perfect time to do the renovations which have long been overdue. Interesting, I, I'm sitting here as, as a lawyer, retired as I am, and I looked at what architects are getting paid and I said, damn, I should have gone to architect school, not to law, not, not to law school. But in any event, that work has to be done and it's so appropriate to tie it in with the work that needs to be done structurally and from a safety point of view on the second floor of the town hall. I'm in favor of this.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Someone new, yes, sir. Up in the middle.
Stefan Hess, Precinct Eight. I move the question.
The gentleman has made a motion to move the question. That is not subject to debate. It is seconded, so we will now move to an immediate question on whether we had done debating Article Six. So, a motion has been made and seconded to move the question. All those in favor of moving forward with a vote on Article Six shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to call the vote on Article Six, which requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Six, yes?
Yes.
Okay. There are seven people standing with her. One, two, three, four, five, six. Sufficient number having risen? Tellers, please take your position. We will now move to a standing vote on the question of moving the question. Please, everyone remain seated. Tellers in position? We will now move, hold on, everybody seated, okay. All those in favor of moving the question will please rise and remain standing. Please take your seats. Let the tellers get back in position. I will now, now ask all those who are opposed to moving the question to please rise and remain standing. Please feel free to sit down. On this matter, one hundred and twenty-five in the affirmative, forty-five in the negative, the motion passes. We will now move to the underlying motion of Article Six. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article Six is passed. Articles, oh, hold on, yes. Most, is there a seven to support the request for a standing vote? One, two, three, four, five, six. We need one more. Seven. All right, we will now move to a standing vote. Tellers, please take your positions. This is on Article Six. Where's the fourth teller? Okay, very good. Okay, if you are in favor of Article Six, please rise and remain standing so the tellers can count your vote.
Thirty-seven.
Please take your seats. All those opposed to Article Six, please rise and remain standing so the tellers can do the count.
Eleven.
Five.
On the matter of Article Six, one hundred and fifty-one in the affirmative, twenty in the negative, Article Six passes. Article Seven?
I move the print-in motion under Article Seven.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article Seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article will authorize the ability for greater investment diversification of approximately ten million dollars that the town manages in trust funds. Massachusetts general laws dictate the types of investment vehicles that municipalities are able to use. Recent legislation altered these rules for trust funds and we are looking to take advantage of this opportunity. Next slide, please. Based upon the goals of the various funds, this change will enable improved investment returns benefiting the trust fund beneficiaries and in some cases, reducing taxpayer contributions.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Seven, right down front?
Jason Molina, Precinct Ten. Listening to the Finance Committee meeting about going over the Warren articles, I was listening to the part about the, the investment company who's, who's advising on this change and hearing about those comments and that currently the makeup of the trust funds are approximately thirty percent in equities and seventy percent in, in bonds. And that potentially, if this passes, that it could potentially be moving towards, and of course, I know it has to be approved, et cetera, et cetera, moving towards a more heavier equities and less on bonds. My question is relative to who makes the decision about the risk tolerance of our community and making the decision about the type of mix of these investments? And then I have a follow-up, comment, a question relative to that response to that.
Mr. Mizikar.
The treasurer collector and myself, through the advice of our investment advisor.
Okay. Follow-up?
Yes, please. So, my concern is that I don't hear an input from the Finance Committee or the Select Board relative to making that investment, that risk tolerance perspective. No offense to Mr. Mizikar, no offense to any of the investment partners, but I think the investment partners themselves are in a position to be more riskier because you're investing in their products and of course, you know, taking on more of their expense charges. So, my concern is that I think there should be other people weighing in, like the Finance Committee who are, you know, overseeing these funds or overseeing the financial health of our, of our community. Ultimately, I'd like to see more engagement, like Select Board being involved or taking input from the community, but at, at minimum, I'd like to see a check and balance in terms of the risk tolerance of our community. And I, I kind of to, to, like I say, as an individual, if I go to my financial planner, I'm asked, what is my risk tolerance? And they'd help advise me on about what, what the selections of, of the investment products that I like to, to take a risk on. But that's my gamble and what I see here is a gamble, and I know it's ten million dollars, right? I know that's relative to the entire budget, but it's still, it still feels like it should be overseen by another group that has that perspective on where we should do the risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Seven? Yes, sir. Microphone, please.
Hi, Francis Manella, Precinct Three. Are there any guardrails at all in the prudent investment plan? I mean, are we free to do what we want? Bitcoin, arbitrage, futures?
Mr. Mizikar.
There's still guardrails, yes. We're, we're obviously fiduciaries on behalf of the town. And I'm happy if Ms. Martinez would be able to bring up Slide twenty-two in our presentation. There are guardrails that are up. This is something we take very seriously. We have very limited tolerance. We don't try to beat any average, you know? We invest these funds across, you know, not individual stocks, but, you know, broader funds to diversify our risk. There's actually higher risk in the current situation because we can only pick from twenty-five equities that, that are there. There's twenty-five blue-chip stocks. So, and that is not a very diverse set. A lot of those are in tech. And if there's an issue within tech and we're limited to those stocks, then we're going to fall with tech. So, these are the rules that are set up by the Commonwealth and we're actually looking to, to have more meaningful returns, but not take on an extraordinary amount of risk. This is not a gamble.
Follow-up?
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Seven? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll move to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article Seven shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Seven passes. Article Eight?
I move the print-in motion under Article Eight.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article Eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to have Human Resources Director Christina Ordung make a presentation regarding adjustments to the personnel bylaw.
Town meeting members, I draw your attention to communication in your packet dated February eighth on the Shrewsbury Personnel Board. I see at least the chair is in the room and Mr. Froyo.
There's a couple others.
Go right ahead.
Good evening all. I am Christina Ordung. I'm the town's Human Resources Director. I'm grateful to be joined this evening by members of the Personnel Board as we present the proposed bylaw amendments. These changes are designed to maintain the competitiveness of benefits available to town employees and streamline our administrative processes. This proposal is grounded in valuable feedback collected over the past several years from employee exit interviews, stay interviews, and wellness and workplace improvement surveys. Moreover, it represents the culmination of over two years of careful deliberation with the Personnel Board and town leadership. The most significant of these changes is the introduction of sick leave Plan Four, a new plan that provides a more comprehensive and modern leave structure. This proposal comes at a time when paid family medical leave is a prominent focus within private and public sector organizations in Massachusetts and beyond, with many communities moving in this direction and a few already implementing paid parental leave policies. We are introducing several important updates to ensure our employment policies are modern, clear, and reflective of current practices. We propose redefining full-time employment, introducing a definition for inclusive service since we currently do not have one, and establishing and defining a paid family leave benefit year since this is a new leave area we are proposing. Additionally, we are revising the definition of a permanent position. Police and fire chiefs will be removed from the classification and compensation plans since they both have individual employment agreements. There is outdated language to be removed that will eliminate references to the Emergency Employment Act and Comprehensive Employment and Training Act of nineteen eighty-three, as well as civil service, military, and sick leave where it's no longer applicable. We are proposing several operational adjustments to streamline our processes, reflect current practices, and make important clarifications to vacation time rules. These include transferring the responsibilities of determining on-call pay, approving hiring rates, salary increases, and vacation leave amounts from the consideration of the Personnel Board to the town manager. The town manager currently has primary authority over these areas, but requires the vote of the Personnel Board to finalize. We propose increasing vacation time by one week for each tenure band except for the top tier, which will remain capped at five weeks. This change aligns with trends in local governments such, such as Hopkinton, Natick, Newburyport, Foxborough, Needham, West Springfield, Situate, Ware, and Norwood, which have recently enhanced vacation offerings to three weeks for new hires and adjusted their vacation To support retention and appeal to top town, enhancing vacation benefits for new hires and providing vacation or time earlier in employees' tenure would be a strategic choice for the town. This adjustment nurtures a motivated, loyal, and productive workforce, boosting mental well-being, productivity, and long-term retention. It also strengthens our competitive edge in recruiting top talent, demonstrated by the fact that the town has already had to adjust vacation time in at least twenty-five recruitments over the last five years to secure the top candidate. recruitments over the last five years to secure the top candidate. Paid family medical leave is a significant focus of Massachusetts municipalities, with many communities exploring this option and several already implementing paid parental leave policies. The proposed sick leave plan four enables us to offer a customized family leave benefit that closely aligns with Massachusetts paid family medical leave while maintaining our local priorities. This approach ensures that we remain competitive with other local governments, state entities, and the private sector as they also move for towards similar family leave policies. This new plan would be applicable to all new employees hired on or after July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Non-union employees currently under sick leave plans two or three would have the option to switch to sick leave plan four annually. Those who elect to switch would permanently remain on the new sick leave plan for the remainder of their employment. We want to remind you that Shrewsbury has had very unique sick leave plans since nineteen eighty-three, which have been beneficial to the town and employees alike. Most other communities and the state provide fourteen sick days per year. In Shrewsbury, we provide five sick days per year, and we offer a short-term disability program under sick leave plans two and three that provide eighty percent of an employee's salary for up to fifty-two weeks. Shrewsbury has effectively managed this benefit for over forty years. In the past ten years, point seven percent of all time worked has been covered under the Short Term Disability Program. When we look at this through a monetary lens, point four-six percent of all paid wages were through the disability program. These figures illustrate that while the program provides meaningful support, its costs and usage remain minimal within the broader scope of the town's payroll and overall work hours. This chart illustrates the differences between the current plans, the proposed sick leave plan four, and Massachusetts paid family medical leave. Beginning at the disability coverage feature, the town currently offers up to fifty-two weeks of disability coverage paid at eighty percent of an employee's base salary. The proposed sick leave plan four offers up to twenty weeks of the disability coverage at eighty percent of an employee's base salary. Continuing down the chart to the family leave feature, you will see that this benefit is not offered under sick leave plans two and three. Under the proposed sick leave plan four, we offer up to twelve weeks for bonding with a new child, up to six weeks for family care, and up to twenty-six weeks for caring for an injured service member. Continuing down the chart to funding, you will see that sick leave plans two, three, and four are funded through regular salaries. The maximum benefit offered by the state continues to change, which is why the town's proposal is to continue its practice of offering eighty percent of the base salary. Tying the benefit to a percentage of the employee's salary ensures that the benefits remain proportional and competitive with the evolving state maximum. Massachusetts paid family medical leave is funded through contributions from employers and employees. In contrast, sick leave plan four is fully funded through regular salaries, eliminating the need for additional contributions from the town or employees. At a local level, the financial impact of employer and employee contributions would be relatively minor and would offer limited practical benefit for program funding purposes. With sick leave plans two, three, and four, positions temporarily vacated due to medical leaves are not backfilled, allowing that twenty percent salary savings from those on leave to be reallocated within affected departments to fairly compensate staff who take on additional responsibilities. Turning to the sick and personal pay time off feature, sick leave plans two and three offer a maximum of seven days off, five sick days for an employee's personal use, and two personal days. This structure requires employees to use vacation or personal days if they need to take time off to care for a sick child or an aging parent. In contrast, sick leave plan four provides seven sick days that can be used not only for the employee's own illness or injury, but also to care for family members. This flexible leave structure is designed to better support employees through minor health needs, both personal and family-related, creating a more supportive and adaptable work environment. Additionally, we recommend eliminating the two personal days for employees covered under sick leave plan four. Overall, we are seeking to provide a more modern and flexible pay time off benefit. In conclusion, the changes to various leaves target modernizing our benefits to ensure competitiveness in the marketplace. Additionally, administrative changes are proposed to ensure our bylaw effectively governs our personnel processes. We are grateful for the leadership of the Personnel Board in crafting these changes. Thank you all for your time and consideration this evening.
Questions or comments with reference to Article eight? Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Naveen Jain from Precinct four. I have a comment and two clarification questions. First of all, thank you to the Personnel Board on this very thoughtful proposal. Two clarification questions with sick leave four about the twenty percent salary savings? How is it determined if that's given to the staff who are taking additional compensation? And would that be for the entire period that person's on leave? Or is it very week to week?
Mr. Mizikar.
It's Ordung.
Go ahead.
The decision varies based on the employee who's out on the leave and which employees are taking on additional responsibilities. So we've deferred to a recommendation from the department head on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. The other question's on paid time off. You mentioned about exhausting all accrued paid time off before moving to unpaid status. Is that tied to choosing Plan Four or is independent of that?
Go ahead, please.
It is not dependent on sick leave plan four. That is a change or really documenting a practice that the town has had for a long time into the bylaw.
Thank you, sir. Further comments or questions with reference to Article eight? Yes? We need a microphone. He's coming down.
Hi, Deborah LeBeau, Precinct five. Just could you please define family? Who consists in a family?
Go ahead.
So the town of Shrewsbury does not define a family member. That definition would come from FMLA paperwork as prescribed from a family member's physician.
Follow up? No? Okay. Further comments or questions with reference to Article eight? Not hearing or seeing any, and this requiring a majority vote, we'll move to take the vote at this point. Mr. Cray, do you have your card up? Go right ahead.
For the, Robert Cray from Precinct two. Could you possibly address the impression that the normal work week is eroded by a lot of the numbers in here? Eighteen instead of twenty, thirty-seven instead of forty? I was reminded of this when I went to vote last Friday at one fifteen, and the polls were closed because there was nobody working there, or very few. Just concerned for the taxpayers in Precinct two, how this could translate to more time off, more full-time employees, bigger town hall, more spending. Everybody get what I'm talking about?
Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you for the question. So this does not adjust anyone's weekly hours requirements, nor did the adjustment of town hall impact that? So most administrative and professional employees work a thirty-seven and a half-hour work week. Police and fire work different. And then DPW mostly works forty hours. So there's no impact on the requirement for the amount of time employees have put in on a week because of these changes.
Further questions or comments with reference to Article eight? Yes. Right along the aisle. On the right.
Maureen Harrington, Precinct one. Just had a clarifying question regarding sunsetting of the other plans. Now that we've got four sick leave plans, is there some reason why we're not sunsetting one, two, or three?
Go right ahead.
Part of our administrative updates are removing sick leave plan one as there's no non-union employees that are covered under that plan. The only employees covered under sick leave plan one have their own respective collective bargaining agreements. We're not sun... Employees are grandfathered into sick leave plans two and three and have the option to move to sick leave plan four. This has been the longstanding practice of when we implement new sick leave policies. I hope that answers your question.
So just a follow-up, you know, so is there a point in time when we would consider, you know, as people roll off those two and three-year plans to move everyone to sick leave four?
Go ahead.
That will happen naturally over time, so I can tell you that the average tenure of our current employee is eight years. So if we, you know, continue down this track, the majority of employees will be under sick leave plan four in a short time.
One other question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just to circle back to the question about full-time employees, I did see a note in here that we're designating full-time employees at thirty-two and a half hours a week versus thirty-seven and a half hours a week. You care to comment on that change?
For pension purposes in accordance with the Massachusetts general laws, but our full-time employees actually work thirty-seven and a half hours. So in order to get, be considered pension-eligible, we have to define it as thirty-two hours in accordance with state law.
So just a quick follow-up. So do we have folks working thirty-two and a half hours a week that are employed by the town?
We do. Yeah, we have a variety of part-time and full-time staff.
Thank you.
Was there a question across the aisle? Yes. Right next to you. There you go.
Sorry. Caroline Maycomber, Precinct nine. Just kind of a quick follow-up to that. So if someone's getting a pension, wouldn't that indicate that they're retired and not a full-time employee?
Mr. Mizikar.
If they're receiving a pension, yes. But to be earning time over the course of your career, you have to work on average at least thirty-two hours a week for that benefit to be available to you.
So did we give any thought to changing the way this was worded to kind of call out the specifics that are required under Mass. general law related to qualifying for a pension versus expected regular work hours for, you know, to the point like typical staff at town hall? Because it doesn't really clearly delineate that we can expect, you know, thirty-seven and a half or forty-hour work weeks from our town employees, not explicitly at least.
Mr. Mizikar.
I believe that it does already.
Go right ahead.
Each one of our job advertisements that we list, list the amount of hours per week. It fluctuates from forty-two hours in the fire department to thirty-seven and a half hours for non-union employees, forty hours for employees in DPW. The Personnel Bylaw is sort of a legal document, so it's referencing the eligibility towards the pension system at thirty-two point five hours per week, but the vast majority of town employees work, you know, forty hours, thirty-seven and a half or forty hours, and there's no intent of changing that.
Follow up?
Is there somewhere on the town website where we can actually see which classes of employees work what hours typically? I noticed there was a change to classes in this document as well, and not really sure why the class changes were made, but wondered if there's like a living document we can look at online.
Go right ahead.
We can certainly build that out on the Human Resources page on the town website to show how many hours each type of employee works as well as their regular operating hours.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article eight? Yes, sir. Right in the aisle.
Ed Bolter, Precinct one. Do the full-time folks work longer than thirty-seven and a half hours? And if so, do they get paid overtime or how does that work? Please.
So all of our exempt employees, which are generally grades nine through eleven, generally work more than thirty-seven and a half hours per week. For employees who are non-exempt, they typically will utilize comp time or they're paid overtime.
All right, thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article eight? Article eight, not hearing or seeing any. We'll move to the vote. This requires a majority. All those in favor of Article eight shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article eight is passed. We will now move to Article nine. In your packet, you will see a district boundary for the zoning. We will have, as well as communication from the Planning Board indicating that public hearings on this matter were held on October seventeenth and October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article nine. You will also find a communication from the Select Board from the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, a letter in support of Article nine. We will have a presentation from the Town Planner, and then we will move immediately to an opposing viewpoint to be offered by a member of town meeting. I do note that this... One second. What's this? Oh, also folks, a letter from the Affordable Housing Trust, a letter of support for Article nine. Article nine requires a majority vote because it is set forth in, it requires a majority of, excuse me, let me start over again. This, although a zoning bylaw, requires a majority vote because it deals with the issue of housing per Mass. general law forty-eight, section five. Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything to say before we go to Mr. McGoldrick?
Not before, but after, please.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I got ahead of myself in making sure everybody had their package. Would the Select Board care to move Article nine?
I move the printed motion under Article nine.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article nine by a vote of seven to zero.
Now we'll turn to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Next slide, please. To frame this evening's discussion, I'd like to briefly provide an overview of the legislative mandate and the local process which has led to this point before delving a little more deeply into the broader considerations for this zoning proposal. It will cover cost considerations for non-compliance, a review of the proposed district, a brief overview of the way the proposal promotes traditional village-style mixed use, and a recap of the economic feasibility analysis as it relates to the proposed affordable housing requirements and safe harbor objectives. Next slide, please. On January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the state legislature enacted a new section three A in the Massachusetts general laws, which mandated one hundred and seventy-seven Massachusetts communities create zoning districts which allow a minimum of fifteen dwelling units per acre by right with specific criteria defined based on their proximity to the MBTA transit service. To maintain compliance with the state law, Shrewsbury is mandated to pass such zoning by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, which is now just six, over six weeks away. If not adopted, the town would become ineligible for thirteen discretionary state grants the town regularly pursues to increase the impact of local dollars. Over the past twelve years, the town has utilized approximately five million dollars in related grants and was most recently awarded five hundred thousand for the Green Street Connector Road. The award letter for this grant states, and I quote, "If this project is located in an MBTA community, please note that a contract will not be executed if the community is non-compliant with section three A of Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, as determined by EOHLC," end quote. This proposal would establish a new overlay zoning district to comply with MGL, chapter forty-eight, section three A, which is the MBTA community zoning law. The zoning overlay includes provisions to allow development of fifteen residential units per acre or less by right within the overlay, and includes mixed-use provisions where the underlying district is commercial or industrial in nature. within the overlay, and includes mixed-use provisions where the underlying district is commercial or industrial in nature. This zoning proposal has been drafted in order to satisfy the requirements of MGL, chapter forty A, section three A, which were instituted as a legislative mandate. Uh, this proposal was drafted by staff in February of this year in coordination with public engagement through the community forums and the MBTA preferences survey. The draft has been refined through both public and professional review and discussion by town legal staff, municipal staff, executive office of housing and livable communities, the attorney general's office, select board meetings, planning board public hearings, and the finance committee public hearing. I do want to take a brief moment here to specifically thank the public who have engaged in this process to date. Through their input, we have made a number of notable improvements to the original proposal, which was to be considered back in May, including pursuit of the pre-adoption review to gain further confidence in the proposal's ability to achieve compliance, caps and restrictions on the proposed special permit criteria, and overall refinement of the language. It has also helped us to improve our presentation of highly technical information in ways that are more accessible to the public and town meeting members to allow them to make an informed and responsible choice this evening. Next slide, please. The main objectives of this proposal, based upon the findings of the public outreach, have been to maintain the commercial tax base in zoning, to limit the overall new unit growth, to co-locate with existing infrastructure and housing, to limit massing of allowable structures over the preservation of open space, to further local safe harbor goals by maximizing the number of subsidized housing inventory eligible units, which in this case is fifteen percent. Looking at the parcels that were strategically chosen for this district, this proposal has been drafted to primarily overlay parcels that either already have existing higher-density housing or are already approved or proposed for this type of development. Therefore, the net new units that could be built under this zoning beyond existing conditions are limited to the extent possible while still achieving compliance with state guidelines. The district comprises approximately one hundred and eighteen acres. The modeled capacity at fifteen dwelling units per acre is one thousand five hundred and twelve units. This is just under the minimum capacity required by EOHLC, which is one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven units. Five hundred and eighty-eight units already exist within the district. Therefore, the net new units which could be built at fifteen dwelling units per acre is nine hundred and twenty-four. If private development follows through on the four hundred and ninety-eight units currently approved or proposed through the forty B process in the district, this net new units is further reduced to four hundred and twenty-six units. It is critical to note that this proposal is only for zoning. There is no requirement that any of these units be built to be considered compliant under the existing legislation. This final proposal is further driven by the state's determination that Shrewsbury cannot mandate mixed use within our three A compliant zone. Next slide, please. Although Shrewsbury cannot implement mandatory mixed use, it is important to meet the community objectives and encourage it through the zoning bylaws. The mixed-use component of this proposal encourages vertical mixed use, which is mixed in a single structure, over horizontal mixed use, which are mixed uses on a parcel. And has been included based on resident feedback of promoting a balance of commercial and residential tax base and a desire for smaller-scale, traditional, village-style mixed use. The proposed definition change is a refinement to promote below-grade, at-grade, and rear residential units, which contribute to smaller-scale, vertical, mixed-use development by regulating the exterior exposure and not interior floors for all zoning districts townwide, which allow for mixed use. The previous definition takes a two-dimensional approach to a three-dimensional reality, and this revised definition fixes that issue. Finally, this change removes room for interpretation, which is especially important in cases where projects will be reviewed under by-right zoning rather than special permit, as the board has less room for applying discretion under that framework. In any case, definitions especially should not allow for interpretation. A definition should be easily agreed to between a permit-granting authority, residents, and developers in order to allow meaningful discussion of any proposed project. Next slide, please. While communities do not have to require affordability in their three A compliant zoning bylaws, we do want, we do not want to miss the opportunity to increase our affordable housing stock. An economic feasibility analysis is required by the guidelines to justify the affordability requirements included in this proposal. The guidelines require our community to conduct this analysis in order to require affordable units at rates between ten percent and twenty percent. Shrewsbury analyzed thresholds of twelve and a half percent, fifteen percent, and eighteen percent. The analysis justified a maximum requirement of fifteen percent affordability. Therefore, our proposal requires any new development under this zoning with five or more units to restrict a minimum of fifteen percent of those units as affordable. This is the maximum affordability allowable under the guidelines, and these units are required to be eligible for the subsidized housing inventory in perpetuity, which contributes to our safe harbor goals. Next slide, please. The primary objective of this zoning proposal is to maintain compliance with the Massachusetts general laws and the responsible management of existing local housing growth. Referencing the proposed district again, it is responsive to community input summarized through the five objectives of maintaining the commercial tax base and zoning, co-locating with existing infrastructure and housing, limiting the massing of allowable structures over preserving open space, furthering local affordable housing requirements by maximizing the number of eligible units and limiting overall new unit growth. Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar.
Just wanted to provide a, a, a little more context to Mr. McGoldrick's presentation on our local proposal. The MBTA communities law represents an additional step by the state to address housing challenges. The most recent step isn't, is not the one with the most limitations imposed on cities and towns. That remains Mass. general law, chapter forty B, which was enacted fifty-five years ago in nineteen sixty-nine. Everyone may recall a constitutional challenge to chapter forty B in twenty-ten that led to a voter referendum to appeal it. That initiative was defeated. While I fully support local control, there is no doubt this law, Massachusetts general law, chapter forty A, section three A, is within the state's authority, given the precedent set through chapter forty B. Most of you know there is pending litigation at the Supreme Judicial Court between the town of Milton and the Attorney General. In summary, this case centers on Milton's decision as a rapid transit community, whether the state can enforce the requirements of this law beyond withholding grants and whether the state executive branch properly promulgated guidelines. It does not consider whether or not the law itself is constitutional. If the guidelines are determined to be invalid, they would need to be redeveloped. However, the underlying law in four categories of grants under three A would still be upheld. Town staff, as always, has worked diligently in the broad interest of all residents to bring a zoning bylaw that allows this body to exercise its legislative authority. I fully believe that it is in the best interest of the town for you to adopt this bylaw. Not doing so tonight inadvisably eliminates critical grant funding that saves taxpayer dollars and kicks the can down the road regardless of the outcome of the Supreme Judicial Court ruling. Actions since the passage of the MBTA community zoning bylaw, including the Affordable Homes Act, signed into law in this August, makes clear the Commonwealth's continued focus on housing. Even if the SJC were determined that the guidelines are improper, there is no doubt that the legislature would quickly act to draft specific legislation to address any shortfalls. And there is no guarantee that legislation would provide any local control as under the current version or not be more onerous or ambitious on housing production. We should work with what is known now, not risk grant funding, and continue to build a desirable community for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an opposing view that will be offered this evening by a member of town meeting. Ms. Maycomber, if you'd care to come to the wall, please.
Good evening. Uh, Caroline Maycomber, precinct nine, and just want to say thank you to Mr. Kane, um, for allowing me the opportunity to just show a few quick slides. Um, and then also just, uh, thank you to the planning board and to the town manager's office for the opportunity as well. I know you've put in a lot of work over the past year, and it does not go unnoticed. So I know we just kind of talked a little bit about the pending litigation. Uh, and I'm really of the viewpoint that we know the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts is going to rule February fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. In just a few months, we will know if these regulations were promulgated incorrectly and what that means. When they put this through, it was done as guidelines disguised as, well, disguised as guidelines, but really regulations. And when it's a regulation, you have to do small business impact studies, you have to do fiscal impact studies. Those weren't done. And so if the Supreme Judicial Court determines that this was not promulgated correctly, then the compliance deadline of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four is now invalid. So I'm not saying that I think we should vote no forever. I do think that we need more affordable housing in Shrewsbury, especially for recent college grads, for, you know, seniors maybe looking to downsize. But I do think we need to kind of look at this and see, maybe it's a no for now. Maybe we have a cause for taking a pause. Uh, just tonight, Duxbury also decided to vote down a yes vote temporarily. So over seven hundred residents in Duxbury against about eighty people said, no, we're not going to vote on this until the SJC has released a final decision. Um, just last week, Millbury did the same thing. So there's already over twenty towns that have said, hey, we just want to take a step back and we want to wait until this is really, um, played out in the courts before we put into permanent bylaw, because this is by-right zoning. And when you do by-right zoning, it can't be undone. So I hate to see us be penny-wise, pound foolish and vote something in that we now can't undo come February fourteenth if the SJC says this was done improperly. And then, let's see, how do I get the video?
Is it that you're not, in this case, actually trying to take on the right of the residents of Milton to exercise their franchise?
Like people would have to ignore their town charter?
I'm sorry, the charter?
The, 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 the referendum to take it to the vote, that you would, you said they would have to ignore it.
So you acknowledge that the EOHLC didn't put together the small business impact statement that was required under the statute?
That's correct. Uh, the, the HLC didn't do the small business impact statement.
Additional, uh, funding sources that the agency sort of added on?
Mm-hmm.
That they would take into consideration? Is that something that they can do?
Uh, so.
Where do, where does the deadline come from?
Uh, the deadline comes from the guidelines.
The point at which Milton, in your view, violated the statute was when it didn't enact a zoning plan by a certain date. But if the certain date only comes from the guidelines and the guidelines need to be done over, uh, then, then what is there to enforce against Milton? So if the guidelines were improperly promulgated, because in fact they are regulations, um, I think the answer to Justice Will LeHoggin's question is that this case must be dismissed.
So you hear it right from the mouths of the Supreme Judicial Court. There is some very serious questioning around whether this was done properly. So I think that's something that as we go to take a vote tonight, we need to kind of keep in our minds. If the courts are questioning whether this was done properly, maybe we should be questioning this as well. I do appreciate the work that our town departments have done over the past year. And I don't know that it's been intentional, but there has been somewhat of a lack of transparency or at least a little bit of haphazard nature to the way things have been put out to the public. Um, so for example, back in May at our regular town meeting, that day on May twentieth, we had received a letter saying that our plan was, was not going to work. And it was not proactively shared with town meeting. We did have a new zone created. Um, I don't know if anyone was able to go to any of those meetings. Oh, they didn't happen. So a new plan was put in place with a new zone, but we didn't have a chance to publicly comment on the new zone. And to me, that's important, right? If you want to propose a new zone, I think we should be able to give feedback around that. So I'm a little concerned with sort of how this has been positioned to us. And in reading through the packet that we received last week, it does appear that some of the items around vertical mixed use are really more related to the Beal, um, development, the proposed Beal development, uh, which I don't know as much about, but I believe is also currently, um, in litigation. So, and maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but it does appear very closely to relate to what's happening with Beal. So I would just say in the spirit of transparency, if that is the case, then perhaps they should be split apart and looked at, you know, separately of their own merits. And so you can see the picture of the before and after zones, and there was no opportunity to comment on that new zone. And then this is just a, a breakout of just those differences in the language where you can kind of see where we delineate that mixed-use development. It really appears to be more related to Beal and less to the MBTA Communities Act. And one other important thing, if you look at any of the letters that we've received thus far from the state, which you can request, the letters very clearly state that this letter is not a guarantee that you comply. Um, the most recent letter that I saw said there were still some items that needed attention. And it again indicated this is not a guarantee that your plan will be accepted by the state. So I hate to see us fall victim to scare tactics. I think that we, as the legislative body for this town, need to not just vote with what our opinion is, but hopefully all of you asked neighbors and people in your precincts what their thoughts were on these articles tonight. You need to vote for your neighbors as well. That's all I had for formal slides. Um, I know you all know I'm usually a little bit wordier than this. Um, but in the spirit of getting everybody home at a decent hour tonight, I just wanted to keep it brief. But hopefully that was some good food for thought and again, appreciate the opportunity to share the opposing viewpoint.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mizikar. Please, guys, don't do that. Come on.
I appreciate Ms. Maycomber's comments and, uh, her taking the time to, uh, provide the, uh, opposing viewpoint, um, and address some things. This is certainly challenging legislation, and I appreciate the acknowledgement of staff. I just want to acknowledge them as well. Uh, there's been a lot of effort that goes into this. Just a couple of comments, um, to make sure that, um, I think, uh, we're holding all facts. Um, this zoning could be undone. Um, there is a statement that the zoning couldn't be undone if it's passed. It could be done through a future vote of this body. If the state comes back and happens to, you know, completely discard this or move in a, a separate direction and this is not valid zoning, um, or an obligation that we have to meet, then we would certainly bring it back to the town. Um, and it could be, uh, enacted through the amendment of the zoning bylaw. Just a, a couple other, uh, things, um, addressing the communications, uh, from town staff. So it is true that we received an email, um, on the, the first day of town meeting on May twentieth, um, with regards to our mixed-use proposal. We are trying to, uh, compel mixed use within the zone, um, driving more commercial development in the community. We all know that's really important. But prior to town meeting, the select board had notified the residents by holding a special meeting that they were going to propose defeating the article and not bringing it up. Um, so there was no point to address, um, the fact that we had received feedback from the state because we already knew that we were in the process of, um, revising the bylaw and bringing it back, uh, later in the year. We also do think that this, uh, zoning, these amendments from May till now are responsive to further public comment. For instance, along Walnut Street, we heard from residents that they didn't feel that high-density housing at fifteen units per acre was consistent with the nature of the single-family homes along that street. So we pulled it away from there. So we stayed within those five pillars that Mr. McGoldrick addressed and continued to listen to residents in providing their feedback, including at the, the finance committee hearings. listen to residents in providing their feedback, including at the finance committee hearings in the spring. And that's my final point. We all knew that regardless if we went to pre-adoption review at the state level or not, we would receive the line that was pointed out in the final slide that this is all subject to further review by the Commonwealth. That's how they work, right? They hold all the cards and they provided us with really good feedback, six areas. All those areas have been addressed in the proposal that we bring forward you tonight, but they're never going to give us a full sign off on what we sent to them until this body votes. That's what they'll actually react to. So again, I thank Ms. May Cumber for the opposing opinion and look forward to any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 9 way up back?
Quick question. Are any of the developments in the proposed overlay district looking to utilize the addition of that five words that were shown of any exterior exposure? Is that why it's being added into the article?
Mr. Mizikar?
We've only seen development, full development proposal for one of them, and that's the 40B project that was permitted, and they do not have any mixed use component to their proposal.
Follow up?
Certainly.
Would those words of any exterior exposure benefit or alleviate the town issues with the Beal project?
It would apply to any district that has mixed use. What's before the court right now is whether or not the plaintiffs have standing to appeal the decision of the board, so it would not have any impact on the judge's decision with regard to standing.
Thank you.
Mr. Manella.
A couple of points I think need to be brought up for Manella, Precinct 3. The SJC case that I see in front of them now doesn't have the same facts as Shrewsbury. It's a different type of community. It's not an adjacent community. It's a transit community. I can't remember the acronym they use for it.
Rapid. Rapid Transit.
Yeah, Rapid Transit Community. We aren't that. The facts of the case are different. Anybody that thinks that you're going to extrapolate a victory for Milton into a victory for Shrewsbury is sadly mistaken. If we don't do something, we will get sued. The AG will sue us. He won't care what the Milton case says. And we're going to have to defend. And it's 500 bucks an hour for a good lawyer for corporate now, and I don't think this town needs to go through this. This is coming. We need the housing. We need the affordable housing. We won't be able to stop this. You can put it off. You can P and M about this and that and the SJC, unfunded mandate. How, I don't know what mandate, what funds you want. The developer's paying for everything. We don't pay for anything. The one is putting a map together, for crying out loud. You've got to support this because it's going to get rammed down our throat, whether we like it or not, so we might as well try and play ball and get it through. Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 9? Ms. Hollenbeck.
I actually live off of Route 20, so I'd be greatly impacted by all this. And yet, at the other hand, I love the convenience of having the MBTA practically within walking distance of my home. And then also, I understand the governor's concern for housing in Massachusetts. We are losing residents to other states, and we have been for as long as I've lived in the state for 20, 30 years. The number one reason is the weather. We can't change that. The other reason is the expense of the state and most notably, our housing. We've tried to do things over the years. This is, you know, appears to be a way for the governor to be using smart growth with tying in homes close to transit locations. So again, that it's more of a green concept that residents can walk there. We can have micro mobility getting there. So it's part of a bigger plan, part of the smart growth program that has been going around for quite a while. So that's my comment. The question I have to Mr. Mizikar is, I know the governor has been starting to withhold funds from those communities who have voted no already. Do we have an idea of how much, if we vote no, how much we will be losing until this goes through the Supreme Court thing and a plan on how we're actually going to make all that money up?
Mr. Mizikar?
So with regards to the grants that may be withheld, the 13 categories, there's four categories within the 3A itself. And then there's, in the guidelines process, they expanded that to 13. We received approximately $5 million over the last 12 years associated with those grants. And those projects have been utilized to really build the tax base and provide greater property tax returns to the community, like at Centec North and Edgemere Crossing and things like that. So they're valued more than just the face value of the grant. But there's, let me be clear, there's only one grant that's in jeopardy or one pot of money that's in jeopardy right now, and that is a $500,000 grant that we were just awarded within the last few weeks that Mr. McGoldrick referenced. $500,000 for the design of the Green South Connector roadway. So there's future opportunities. You know, we normally, not normally, every year, we put in a Mass Works grant or a community one-stop grant, which most of those grants fall under. We're not successful every year. They've been meaningful over the past years, and we've utilized them to the greatest extent possible. But just to be really clear, the funding that's on the table right now is just the $500,000.
Further comments or questions way up back?
Catherine Rajwani from Precinct 7. With regard to that $500,000 grant that you're referring to, is that in the area where the, one of the proposed 40B projects will be?
Yes.
Mr. Mizikar?
Yes.
And that extension of the road, is that something that the 40B developer could pay?
We tried to negotiate with them to do that, and they were uninterested, but they are gifting the land to the town for us to develop it. So we are leveraging the grants. I'm really excited that we got the design funded, not just for the design funds, but normally when the state provides design funding, they support the construction thereof.
Okay, but that grant really just goes to more building, more 40B building, basically. It's not funds that are used, you know, for education or green space. It's just for more building, correct?
Mr. Mizikar?
It's for the construction of a roadway.
For the 40B. I mean, that's why I assumed that we had wanted to see if the 40B builder would take it on the connector road. And I just had one other comment. Someone had brought up the Milton litigation. I believe those facts, and Ms. May Cumber can certainly weigh in, absolutely apply to us. Because if those guidelines were, are not really guidelines, they're actually regulations in disguise, then they'll be invalidated. And they'll be invalidated in February. So I certainly think that, you know, we should vote no for now. There's no reason to amend our zoning at this point where we could, in the spring, have another meeting where we have some certainty as to whether or not these guidelines really are valid. We all heard from the justices. It does not sound like they think they are. It sounds like this will be found to be invalid. There'll be a new proposal, and I don't think we should be rushing when there's really no reason for us to do so. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Charlie Garabedian.
Charles Garabedian, Precinct 2. When I look at this situation, two things come to my mind. The first is, the goal of this law, as I take it, is to increase ridership on the rail line from Worcester to Boston. That commuter rail line has been in existence since I can remember, since I was a child. The Boston and Almere Railroad ran that with no MBTA subsidy at all. They did a fine job, but slowly, we built the Mass Pike and we said to America, get into your cars. That's the best way to be. So now we're on our quagmire because you get on the Mass Pike and you never get there. Well, eventually you do. So we're trying to lure people from their automobiles onto the rail. So one way, as I read this law, is to bring people into Shrewsbury, and hopefully they're going to use going to Boston by rail. Well, two events have to occur. Number one, the people moving into this new proposed housing would have a need to go into Boston, hopefully on at least four or five times a week, if it's going to be affordable to the MBTA. The second event is if those people do move in and have to go in four or five days a week, where they choose to train because they have the option of taking their car, carpooling, or taking a bus. The probability, as I have worked it, of both events occurring, that is, coming into Shrewsbury and working in Boston and taking the train into Boston, that probability, according to my computation, is one-fourth. I worked out some other computations, and those computations were less than one-fourth. So one-fourth is the maximum probability of this being successful to put people in trains. I did this by using this theorem of probability called the probability of a conjunction theorem, which has been proven true for years. The probability of one-fourth is a rather small probability because probability is a number that is greater than or equal to zero and less than or equal to one. If you don't like it as one-fourth, then look at it as 25%. So I don't believe that this is going to be successful in putting enough people on the train into Boston. And who's going to pay for it? Taxpayers of Shrewsbury. Which leads me to my second point. You're bringing more people into the town, and you're running a risk of putting more students in the schools, more stress on the police department, fire, water, sewer. Eventually, all of this will come down to the taxpayers, and we'll have to pay more on our tax bill, which is fine. But where is it in this law that where the state says to the community, if you get into financial difficulty, we're here to help you in some way, in some way. But no, they don't do that. It's a mandate. And without any consideration for what we as individual people are going to have to tolerate. And I want to help put people in housing, but there has to be consideration of the people that are already here. From a selfish point of view, I suppose I could say, I don't care. I'm 81 and a half years old. I'll be dead. But my existence says you can't do that. You have to think of everybody. And I wish the state people would have that same philosophy, thinking of everybody, because they still represent us, as you still represent us. It is the people that have to be thought of first and pretty given anything else second. Thank you for your time and thank you for your attention.
Mrs. O'Connor? Microphone, please.
John O'Connor, Precinct 2. At the risk of being repetitive, I think it's foolish for us to risk funding that we're getting from the state. I think that it's important to reemphasize that the area that we're looking at to zone has two 40B units, construction projects. One is already approved and being built now, and the other one's also approved and in process. The other one, it has the 40B units existing in their complex already and would only minimally add more to that project right there. So we're not changing what's already going to happen to us anyhow because the 40B is already there. I think that if there were something to change in the courts, we can come back here. It's a simple process, just like we're here today, and we can talk about it and reconsider what we have. But these projects are going in regardless of what we do tonight. So I think it's important for us to vote for this proposed.
Mr. Samir? Guys, please.
There we go. Just want to talk about the Supreme Judicial Court case. It was actually for 55 minutes. It's not uncommon for the judiciary to ask a lot of probative questions. There are also a lot of questions about if the guidelines aren't enforceable, then the law itself would partially have no meaning. So there was a lot of argument about, wouldn't it be a toothless law if they weren't enforceable? But what does impact is something that Mr. Mizikar said earlier. 40A, 3A will be held constitutional. That is not a question in front of the Supreme Judicial Court. The parties acknowledge that. The four categories of grants, one of which will impact Green Street, is one of those, falls under that category. The Supreme Judicial Court also said, with respect to all 13 categories when the question came up, that, and it was whether or not the EO HLC had expanded the grants, what the answer was, is that the enabling legislation for those grants requires compliance with state law. When you certify for a grant, you say that you're complying with state law. So if you're not compliant with the MBTA zoning, it does expand by itself without the law of the statute, whether it's a guideline regulation or under what's under the EO HLC as stated. It's important to keep that in mind, and a couple other things. That MBTA does not require where these units be built, nor does it require where they are built. There's a lot of local control here where 40B there is not. We know that 40B is constitutional. We know the likelihood that a developer's not going to come in and raise the existing structures where there's already property. We also gain the affordable housing component. We've talked a lot about that. We're also short, we're at 6.17% towards the 10% goal under 40B. To lose the grant funding, when we talk on a regular basis about spending every dollar wisely, it's a similar argument, that $500,000 is real meaningful dollars. It's also important to know that 3A, unlike 40B, does require the developer to pay infrastructure costs. So there are more aspects of local control. While not ideal, it's still going to be held constitutional, and we are going to have to face it. So if the SJC decides to look at something for Milton, it still doesn't help us in our situation. And I recommend or would like to see us control our destiny now, rather than face the whims of the future, should legislation be changed. And we don't know what that will look like. So those are just a few thoughts, but this is within our control. It will be held constitutional. And whether or not Milton comes out one way or another, we know that those grants will impact us immediately. Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to the article way up in the aisle? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Zekas, Precinct 1. Just to respond to a couple of things that Mr. McGoldrick and Mr. Mizikar stated regarding Beal. And I applaud my fellow town meeting member, sorry, I don't know your name, but for bringing up the term any, of any one exterior exposure, which is included in this. It's a redefinition or zone change of the vertical and horizontal mixed use. Mr. McGoldrick indicated that the document and the article that we're voting on, the motion that we're voting on today, was refined by public hearings, two of which he mentioned were in front of the planning board. Did you show any slides to the planning board, Mr. McGoldrick, regarding the, through you, Mr. Moderator, regarding the vertical and horizontal? Mr. Moderator, regarding the vertical and horizontal mixed use?
Mr. Mizikar.
No.
Did the town planner bring it up at the planning board meetings?
Mr. Mizikar.
No.
But you just indicated, the two of you combined, that it's a significant part of what the proposal is and you're indicating that it is with respect to multiple zones in Shrewsbury. If it was so important, why didn't you bring it up?
Mr. Khan.
It wasn't brought up throughout the planning board process this fall because mixed use was not mandatory in this proposal. We took the opportunity, as I said, at the finance committee, and I'm happy to say again, as we went through the permitting process with the Beal project, which you're referencing, we saw an opportunity to clarify our definition. So we did that.
So it does relate to the Beal project and you did see an opportunity to refine the definition that directly impacts the zoning of Beal, correct?
Mizikar.
It does impact the zoning where Beal is.
That's correct. Thank you for finally acknowledging that. It took quite a bit of time.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Mizikar.
I was very clear at the finance committee when you asked the same questions, the same thing. So I'd appreciate you refining that statement.
My question's relating to the, to the planning board right now. And that is the planning board, the two public hearings on this article, the two public hearings on this article, that the planning board, who recommends zone changes, it was never discussed. It's three paragraphs hidden in a 15-page motion. And I don't know how you can expect every one of these town meeting members to know and understand and research the implication of five words and what it means to the community. And then what's going to happen three or five or seven months from now when everybody figures it out? You're going to say, "Town meeting voted for it. They authorized it. We simply brought it before our legislative body." Stop the blame game.
Come on, guys. Let's stay focused. Paul, one more follow-up so we can get some others in, please.
This is an important matter, Mr. Moderator. I've spent several years on it and this is, this is very, very important and I can appreciate that.
We'll be happy to come back and make sure everybody has a chance.
You know how that works. Someone's going to move the question and it's going to be sayonara. But I would like to, to just reference two more things. One is the, the indication by the town planner that this is going to promote smaller scale development. It will not promote smaller scale development. In fact, the implications it will have on Beal will be higher density, more units in that building. We've already had, under oath, the building inspector indicate that it is her position that the current approved Beal project does not meet the current bylaws in zone. So you're trying to change the bylaws to impact the litigation. It is improper and inappropriate, especially when you haven't advised this legislative body of the true meaning of what you're trying to achieve. And lastly, Mr. Mizikar, you, this gentleman asked you if there was, and if this was going to impact Beal at all, the litigation, and you said, "No." That is laughable. You actually said with a straight face that what's before the court is the issue of standing. There are many issues before the court. The issue of standing is one of them. This is not solely the basis of the litigation. In fact, the developer's attorneys asked for a mini trial based on standing and the judge didn't see it was necessary. He wanted to hear the whole case. Translation, it's likely that they have standing. So your statement is factually incorrect and misleading and it is this continued cover-up that is making you lose credibility along with the people at the table in the front. It is disastrous what you're doing. It is just completely inappropriate and you've got to stop it. You can't try to win at all costs.
Mr. Smith, just a second. Mr. Mizikar, would you care to respond?
I would. Nothing that I've told this body is not true this evening. What is before the court, as the gating issue, is standing. It comes down to whether or not the abutters have individualized harm because headlights will be directed at their property. That is what is before the court and that is what the court will consider. If they have standing, will it go to trial? Yes. The question the gentleman asked before is will it impact it? It won't. The question before the court right now is standing.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Nine? Yes, right behind gentleman in the, I'm sorry. No, you've already spoken too. So gentleman down front first and then we'll go to you. Yes, sir.
Ed Bolter, Precinct One. So I've been following this for the better part of a year and what I think I'm seeing is the Hegelian dialectic on steroids. This is the problem-reaction-solution that is a very effective technique by governments. Declare an emergency, get a reaction, and come up with a solution. And then you sprinkle on some coercion, right? Don't do it and we're going to keep some money away from you, money that comes from taxpayers. If you do do it, we're going to give you a half million dollars to build a road, right? It's these grants that is the crack cocaine that towns get addicted to. I'm here on principle, right? I mean, I don't know if we can stand in the way of this thing or not. It's disappointing that we don't try because I think others' communities are saying, you know, when is enough enough here, right? I mean, how many more parcels do we have to cede control to the state over, right? Then we finally stand up and say enough. But, you know, some of the things I've just heard tonight are very concerning about, you know, how this game is being played out and I think we can do better.
Two people back on the aisle, if he's still interested. No, no, right here.
Tony Bonaventura, Precinct Four. I do have a comment, but I have a question first. If this were approved, this, this particular plan, isn't it possible that a developer could start a permit process now? And if we did get rid of the, this particular zoning plan in March, it would be too late or May or whatever the time is next year?
Mr. Mizikar.
Is there clarification you could provide? I don't, I don't understand the question.
If, if we, if we approved this new zoning and one theory is to take it away in the future, isn't it possible that a developer, once this zoning is approved, could put a permit in under the zoning that we approved tonight before we get to a point where we take it back out, whenever that case may be? Is, is that possible?
Let's ask the town council. Mr. Madouse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In that circumstance, the developer would have to have an application for a building permit submitted prior to the planning board hearing on the proposal to rescind or amend the zoning bylaw to remove these provisions.
Thank you. So the answer to that question, just so everybody understands, is yes. A developer, if this gets approved tonight, could permit a project as long as it's done before that, whenever a point in the future that the zoning is theoretically removed by this body. And the developers are very savvy, so it's highly likely that that could, will happen and may even change what's already approved. We don't know. The second, the second thing I want to mention is I've been following this very closely. I went to all the planning board meetings. I've been watching meetings in other towns. And one thing that keeps coming up is that this is somehow going to lower the price of housing. A, it's never going to lower the price of single-family housing because it's just about 99 percent, 99.9 percent that there will, there will be no additional single-family housing built. So this is only for a high, we'll call it a high-rise, many-story building, apartment-type living that folks might gain. And two, it will not be less expensive than the cost of building it. The builders have to make their profit. So the land will go up in value, they'll pay a huge sum for the land. The cost of building is very expensive, so it doesn't change by the supply, it doesn't change the actual cost of housing. So in other towns, even towns where this was defeated, a lot of people are feeling like somehow this is going to magically lower the cost of housing and it doesn't. The affordable units would be there if it was a 40B or not. So I just think that it's important for people to understand that the builders still have to pay for the cost of the building. They make their 15 percent or they don't do it or whatever their percentage is and the cost is going to be what the cost is. So this, this doesn't do anything for that.
Okay, Tony, can we move it along, please?
Yep. I, I just quickly, as far as the, the segment that was put in there about Beal, I did have a, ask about that. I went back and looked at the wording. I actually think that wording makes the zoning less clear, even if it were all over town. I think that it was hap-hazardly done and definitely should go through the planning board process on its own, just like they said the other zoning was improved by going through the process. I believe that that would be the case with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of town meeting who have not spoken this evening, Ms. Deering?
Martha Deering, Precinct Four. I have several points. First of all, I believe a few years ago, we approved a law, a bylaw within our town meeting, that talks were supposed to be limited to five minutes. You also reiterated at the beginning that respect is a very important part of this and it's possible to disagree and still be respectful. I think the point that was just recently made is that 40B is going to happen anyway. And if we, the housing is going to continue to grow, we do need more housing. And if we don't approve this, 40B is going to come in and do the same thing. So there's going to be more housing, no matter what. Now, I'd also like to ask Mr. Mizikar, if you would, and Mr. Samia both, if you could just clarify again and clearly repeat, what will happen if the Supreme Judicial Court says, "No, these guidelines are not, are really regulations, you've got to go back." But what is the basic law that will remain and how will that impact us?
That's quite a question. Are you guys comfortable?
Well, I can take at least one part of that.
Okay, take one part of that, please.
So the general law 40A, Section 3A, Subsection B provides four areas of grants that the town would not be eligible for if we're not compliant. Those grant areas are substantial. They include the Mass Works Program. It's one of the biggest state infrastructure programs that exist. It's where the vast majority of that $5 million in funding has come from. So that's not in the guidelines. The balance of the grants, nine other areas, have been promulgated through the guidelines. It's hard to say, in my opinion, how the Supreme Court's ruling, what they would do if they found in favor of Milton, you know, do they send it back to the legislature for review or, you know, do they send it back to the EOHLC to develop regulations rather than guidelines? But one thing that, that is clear is that everything that's written, very brief law in the statute itself, doesn't appear to be the, the subject of the conversation, parts of which were shown this evening. So we wouldn't be eligible for those four grant program areas. Include, and that last grant program falls, of the $500,000 falls within one of those four original ones.
Further comments or questions? Ms. Goldman. Coming down, Roberta, it's coming down on your left.
Roberta Goldman, Precinct Eight. I wish I had had more time to be studying the technical aspects of this proposal. You guys have done a very good job. But all I can say is, what I am interested in in our community is, first of all, we have a wonderful community, we have an education system where everybody should have an opportunity. We have middle-class people who are being educated and, and families who are moving in just because of that and they can afford it. And I'm really concerned that we find some way to move, to let people move in that are of, of a capacity to be able to live here, take advantage of this community. And if it happens to be because we have to have the mixed use of the housing, I haven't gotten myself into it that much, but really, the real thing is attracting people to our community and having it, a, a new segment to our community or another segment that will be able to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Collins, Precinct Four. You know, I'm going to come right out and say that I, I'm going to ask town meeting to, to vote no on this bill for two reasons. One, you know, the, the mandate from the state, and I have another point after that, but the mandate from the state, you know, is kind of an unwanted mandate. I don't think it's just Shrewsbury. I think it's most of the communities are being mandated to do this. You know, living in Edgemere, being on Route 20, I've seen a significant increase in the traffic down there and it's really a terrible situation. And I haven't seen anything in any of the plans or, or, you know, projects that are going on that are going to expand Route 20 and make that a more passable and user-friendly access road. So that's one problem. We keep building here. You know, because of the MBTA thing, that's not the only issue going on. I understand, you know, we're going to have other projects. We have a 40B going in at the old Shrewsbury Commons, which I'm proud to say that I worked at when it first opened. And, you know, it's, it's still going to, you know, there's still going to be building houses no matter what we do. But I, I am also going to say that I want to defeat this bill based on the zoning change because, as we've just seen, with all due respect to my colleague, that it's a major distraction to the whole process that we're, we're talking about tonight. We probably spent more time talking about Beal than the actual MBTA. So, you know, I'd really like to rewrite this and come back again when we have more, you know, a, a clearer path for both, both issues and a separate path for both issues. And lastly, I'm going to say, and I hope everybody in the state's watching this right now, that this mandate was not brought forth by the Shrewsbury Board of, of, the Shrewsbury Select Board. It wasn't brought forth by the planning board. It wasn't brought forth by zoning or finance committee. It was brought forth by the state. And there's been a lot of talk in the last six months about accountability and who should be accountable for this and those who are elected officials. Our elected, elected, elected officials on the state level voted this bill in. The reason we're having this discussion right now is because that law passed through the state legislature. So my recommendation would be that you need to go to those people and say, "We do not want this. We don't think it's a good idea. We don't mind putting houses up, but we want, you know, better infrastructure to do that. But we don't need to be told by the state," which has gone back all the way, not in my recollection, but in the history I understand, you know, back to the Wachusett and Quabon Reservoir when Boston needed water. "So, you know, let's take over a couple of towns, flood them, and so we can have some more water. And then build a big-ass pipe," excuse my language, "all the way from there to Boston, through Northborough, take land, you know, build bridges over roads and move on." This is another example of that. And in deference to my other colleague over here, you know, you call me a malcontent, but I have an issue with anyone putting, you know, jamming any type of ball down my throat. So I think this bill should be defeated.
Thank you. Any other comments from people who have not, who have not spoken yet? Ms. Garnett. Like to make sure people have not been heard, then we'll go around.
J.D. Garnett, Precinct Two.
J.D. Garnett, Precinct Two. I rise in opposition of Article Nine, although Article Nine is not the same as 40B. I feel that we are being sold the same bill of goods that communities were sold 55 years ago when that state mandated initiative was enacted in 1969. We are still far from our 10% goal, yet we, yet there isn't a project in town where the threat of pass it, oh my God, I'm so sorry, where the threat of pass it or they'll go 40B isn't held over our heads. Although the, hold on, let's put glasses on. Sorry. Although it, although it is being suggested, this isn't actually a true Affordable Housing Act. And since we still have a fee in lieu of written in, I only envision this blossoming into nothing more than a threatening tool for savvy developers to get their way out of our community. I'm also disappointed that we still have the separate zoning issue built into this, regardless of its need or origin. It just doesn't seem to belong. Please join me in saying no, and joining many other communities and see that see this as a negative for losing more local control. Thank you.
Along the, along that aisle, Mike?
Michael LaPamato, Precinct Six. Just a couple of clarifications. Mr. Manila had mentioned the fact that the town could get sued if we didn't do this. My understanding is that the way the state would react is just holding, withholding of the grants. Is it my correct in understanding it that way, or could the town be sued by not complying?
I'll ask the town council to respond.
The Attorney General's Office has a different opinion. They believe they can enforce the statute, that the first section in 3A says, "A town shall have an area zone for multifamily use as a right." So that's the Milton case, they're seeking to enforce that, and they believe the remedy is not limited to be the withholding of grant funds. That's part of the argument at the SJC now. And while I have the opportunity, town meeting should be aware, the snippets that were presented, as you would expect from the opposition, of all that was negative for the Attorney General's position, there was plenty of questioning that was pointed towards the town of Milton as to whether their position was sustainable. So the outcome is uncertain as to what the SJC will do.
Good follow-up, Mike?
But the Attorney General's Office has hired a special counsel as of late to bring enforcement matters of the MBTA Communities Act.
Yeah, please.
Please, go ahead.
So earlier during the presentation with the exclusions from the current 40B projects, et cetera, there was a comment made that the remainder of the number of units would be 400 and some odd units. Is that correct? And once we hit that goal, then we wouldn't have to have any more units put in?
Mr. Mizikar?
So our obligation is to zone. There's no obligation for construction. Those figures that we used in the last one that you referenced was our analysis based on the existing units within the Commons neighborhood, and then the proposals at 409 South Street and 33 Green Street. But there's no part of 3A right now that says when or if units actually need to be constructed.
In reality, if the land is available and the zoning is available, a developer is going to take advantage of it and try to do it. So I'm just curious if, once we reach that point, we don't have to approve anymore.
As a right? Mr. Mizikar?
We don't know.
It's as a right. The maximum that is allowable under the zoning in that area is the 5, 1,511. So that's the up, you know, the most that could be developed there based upon the zoning by right.
And also, one more quick thing, is would the existing zoning regulations, such as building heights and things like that, be enforced so we couldn't end up with a 10-story building there or something like that?
Mr. Moderator? Yeah, so the overlay district itself, if it is going to be relied upon, has a maximum height within it directly for just this overlay.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article? Anyone new down front?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jason Palich, Precinct Eight. For all of the focus on the toxicity of our political culture over the past few weeks and months, I think it is important to note that the MBTA Communities Act was a bipartisan piece of legislation. Though it is coming into effect under Governor Healey, it was in fact a top policy priority of Governor Baker. It was proposed by a Republican governor and enacted by a Democratic legislature because there was bipartisan consensus that housing scarcity is a direct economic threat to Massachusetts. Massachusetts does not have the housing units necessary to sustain the workforce that our industries are going to need in the coming years. Less than 10 years ago, as a 20-something, I bought a house in Shrewsbury. I bought the cheapest cottage that I could find, or more to the point, the cheapest cottage that Kathy McSweeney could find for me. I paid $230,000 for it. I threw everything I had into the down payment. It is less than a decade later, and that house, according to Zillow, is now over half a million dollars. It is more than double what I paid for it. And while I should be pleased that that, on paper, makes me a wealthier person, I actually think it's very sad that somebody my age at my income level could not do that today. I am proudly voting in favor of this article.
Further, come on, folks. Further comments or questions with reference to this article? Right up in the middle. White, white, Miss McSweeney. I'll get you right after that.
Kathy McSweeney, Precinct Eight. This was not planned. I had my hand raised before him. But Shrewsbury, or Massachusetts has a housing shortage, and our state needs roughly 200,000 additional units by 2030 to maintain our existing base of employment. This includes our town workers, our teachers, our workforce, the people that are serving us meals and getting our coffee in the morning. We need to provide additional housing for these people. Having additional, whether they're rental units or units for sale, obviously, it's a, you know, common economics, the more units we have, it will have prices go down. But I think more importantly, it's about creating housing for the Commonwealth and be able to keep our Commonwealth flourishing. So I vote, I'm voting in favor of this.
Could you pass the mic right behind you to the gentleman? Thank you.
Raju Palpati, Precinct Four. I had two questions. One was about the 40B exclusion here. I think the state mandates that it is not going to be a 40B. Am I correct in that? It need not be a 40B?
Could you restate the question, please, sir?
Yes. The state mandate clearly states that it should not be a 40B. Am I correct?
Mr. Mizikar?
Does it have to be a 40B?
No. Mr. McGalder, go ahead.
So 40B is an entirely separate section of the Massachusetts general laws, so it's a separate permitting mechanism available to developers.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
So is there a possibility, in the future, we rezone this right now, and in the future, when a developer comes and wants to exclude from 40B, so he can build any number of units that he likes without having 40Bs in it?
Mr. Mizikar? Mr. McGalder? Somebody?
So if I'm understanding the question, so as long as the town is either within safe harbor provisions, we're precluded to, you know, we can preclude the developer to the friendly 40B provisions, which means it's negotiated with the town, the developer, if we're not at our 10% or any of the other statutory minima, could do an unfriendly 40B, which does not require that prior negotiation with the town?
So that answered your question, sir?
Yeah, almost. That means that...
So if I could...
Go ahead.
So I believe, so 40B would still be an option even if we zone this this evening, right? So 40B can, you know, they can construct housing under those parameters regardless of the underlying zoning district, including this one?
Okay. And according to the preliminary analysis by someone else in our town meeting members, we understand that we will end up losing around $2 million a year because of the schooling that we'll have to provide for the, if everything was built. And I don't understand the situation here, because we're losing $500,000 in grants to pay $2 million from our pockets. Is that correct in assuming?
Mr. Mizikar?
So there's a variety of financial conversations at the planning board and at finance committee, and individuals had requested that I run an analysis based upon the property tax revenue, other revenues, and using a per pupil average analysis. And whenever I ran it that way, there was a less revenue than expenses. I don't feel that that is the most accurate way to look at these developments, in that every, the next student through the door isn't, doesn't cost the average, right? The average is the wrong cost to use in that scenario. And I went through that analysis at finance committee as well. So I don't, I don't agree that that statement, you know, plainly as you stated, is accurate.
I understand. So what if there are enough students who come in, we will have to put, build a new, then the argument is correct?
Mr. Mizikar?
No analysis that I undertook looked at building an additional school, no.
I understand, I understand. But of course, these are multifamily units, as I understand, and they are...
Yep, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, no. That's okay. So these are multifamily units suited for, you know, big families. They should not, I mean, the state law says, states that there is no limit on the number of people who can stay in these units. Am I correct?
The health code does. The question is whether or not there's a limit on the number of people who can be in each unit, as I understand the question.
So zoning does not typically limit occupancy? That would be related to building or health?
Thank you.
So there is a possibility, we will have to build a new school. There is a possibility. I mean, it is not completely out of the picture.
Go ahead.
I mean, so one of the analyses that we did, you know, we looked at the two most recent developments in the communities, Lakeway Commons and Edgemare Crossing. There's 250 units in each one of those apartment communities. And at Lakeway Commons, the Quinn 35 development, there's 21 total students currently enrolled in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. That represents .08 students per unit. And then the Edgemare Crossing, there's 16 total students there, .06 students per unit. And we have a range of students and housing across all of our multifamily developments that averages out at 0.28 students per unit. So we've looked at all those. So, I mean, using those last two examples, which we have the data for, again, between the two developments, there's 37 students that come, and those students are across all 13 grade levels.
Hold on, just a second. Are you all set, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Could you please pass the microphone down three rows to the middle?
Hi, Sanam Zaire, Precinct, I don't even remember, seven, seven. So I, there's a lot of talk about like building or not building, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. The part about transit-oriented development overlay district, again, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but we're taking an area that already has apartments, and there are two proposals for 40B housing. So there will be housing there anyway, and we're just calling it transit-oriented development overlay to meet the state requirement? Is that an oversimplification, or is that accurate?
Mr. Mizikar?
It's a little oversimplified, but yes, we are trying to put the zoning in place, which requires 15 units per acre in density in areas where there's existing housing and proposed housing.
Okay. And then my, so I, just to, just to continue clarifying, it really has no impact on, like, this doesn't open up additional housing or close down housing, it's just naming an area where housing will go as a transient, transit-oriented development overlay district? Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, if those developers move forward, right? Like, you know, yeah. I mean, the general nature of your comments is accurate, and that's why we put the zoning in place there, but I can't be absolute in just saying yes to that.
Okay. The second question I have is that I think I'm, personally, I think a lot of people are maybe confused about this second piece about the mixed-use development vertical mix. I'm not necessarily sure I'll gain clarity on that tonight, but is there a way to pull that out and vote on the, vote on the transit-oriented development overlay district piece? Or do they have to be voted on together? Like, can I, can I propose to amend the article and split those two pieces?
I mean, I will, I'll start by saying that, you know, we feel the mixed-use component here is important. We are trying to preserve the amount of commercial development and attract commercial development along with the housing, but that is an option that's available to you this evening.
Somebody else had asked earlier if that piece applies to any of the existing projects in place, and you had said no. So it doesn't seem related. I guess, can I, can I motion to separate the two?
I would need a written motion from you, but...
I just write it on paper with a pen?
Sure.
Okay, sure, I'll do that.
We will be receiving a motion to amend Article Nine.
I just feel like that's a confusing piece that I don't necessarily have clarity on, and if there is some kind of connection with some kind of legal case, I'd like to be more educated on that and maybe talk to more people. And I'm also being mindful that we're approaching 10 o'clock, so I imagine at some point we'll be voting on this, so...
Do you want to propose your motion?
Yes. My assistant, Bridget, is writing that right now. Do we need all the language, or can we just...
Let me get this down first.
This goes right here. No, it's on the front. Okay, as a starting point, I move to amend Article Nine in Section 2A to remove the language referring to mixed-use developments to be considered as a separate article.
Section 2A, definitions?
Referring to mixed-use developments, mixed-use development vertical mix.
Where is she? Are you on page 28?
25.
25. Town meeting members, you should go to your page 25. Section 2A, definitions. Could you read the proposed motion again, please?
I move to amend Article Nine in Section 2A to remove the language referring to mixed-use vertical mix developments to be considered as a separate article.
You can strike it, but you, we can't have another article.
Oh, okay, to strike it. I move to amend Article Nine in Section 2A to remove the language referring to mixed-use developments.
Okay, we need to go, you're actually in the motion component. Where is that within the article component?
That's where she is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I read into it. No, that's fine. Is everyone clear of the motion being offered?
No.
No, okay. Could I ask that you go to... Could I ask that you go to page 25 of your packet? And you will see proposed motion, and then it goes to Section 2A definitions. Okay, so you're in the article. And you're trying to strike that language, correct?
Yes, specifically, "an integration of commercial and multifamily residential uses in a single structure in which the exterior exposures of residential uses are located above the exterior exposures of commercial uses on the ground floor of any one exterior exposure." And the reason is because there have been some accusations that I am unsure of, and I'm not sure if that's something that other people share, but I feel...
Yeah, I got you. Okay, is there a second for the motion? Motion has been made and seconded. Are we all clear on the motion?
No.
Okay, would you read the motion one more time? Town meeting members, please go to page 25, down the bottom, Section 2A definitions. Just a second. It appears twice for some reason, but we, I take it that you're seeking to strike it twice.
Sure, if you just tell me how to do it, I will do it in that way. Sorry? Okay, let's, I move to amend Article 9 to strike both sections, Section 2A definitions, mixed-use development vertical mix, and the other one is same thing written twice, so remove both of them. Sorry?
So are you seeking to strike everything, or just the proposed changes?
Just the proposed changes.
Just the proposed changes.
I feel like we're overcomplicating.
Hold on. Okay, is everyone now clear on the motion? Is everyone clear on the amendment? Okay, I'm hearing a no.
Okay, sorry, I'm just clarifying. I, I'm just saying, let's take out that piece, because there seems to be some controversy around that piece, and let's focus on this, this more pressing one, which is the transit-oriented development overlay district, and maybe discuss this at another time that's not 10:00 PM.
Hold on, yes, sir.
Just to clarify, it's just taking out the underlined and bolded language, so leave...
Correct. Yep, underlined and bolded, so the exterior exposures of, and the exterior exposures of, and of any one exterior exposure.
Okay, with that clarification, are we now clear? Do we have a second of the clarification?
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any conversation, debate on this motion. Mr. Molina.
Jason Molina, Precinct 10. Could we get the comments from town manager, or, you know, council to just ensure that what's being proposed is sound, so we don't have to revisit this one more time?
Mr. Mizikar, comment?
As far as legality, any, any other reason why there should be any question tonight
about whether this should, this is, this, you know, passes to go forward, the, the motion here? So is like, any issue with, with having the, you know, you had, you know, obviously a change here to the, to the mixed-use definition, does that have any other ramifications that we need to be aware? I mean, we're certainly scared conversations earlier, you know, last hour or so, that if we let this go through, something bad will happen. Will, if something, will something bad happen if we don't have it? So just some clarification, so we're not called into bind as a town meeting later on.
So Ms. Zaire's approach to this would be essentially leaving the definition as it currently exists within our bylaw, which is not our proposal, but would have no implications.
Further?
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
No further questions, I'm sorry, go ahead. And does it have any material impact to any other project, Beal, in our community?
Mr. Mizikar.
No, I mean, that's, as I said, for some future decision.
Okay, so we're clean here.
Again, our proposal is to amend the zoning bylaw as it is, because it provides clarity that was discovered through the Beal, so I want to say it again, discovered through the Beal permitting process. We think this provides clarity to that.
Okay, so certainly, if there's someone here who has intimate knowledge about that and the con side, why we shouldn't change that law, or change, or change the definition, or should have it, it's best to just put it out now, so we understand what we're voting for, like the modifications.
A motion has been made and seconded. That is now up for debate. Mr. Ghulie.
Bill Ghulie, Precinct 8. I have a question about the practical consequence of the additions if we were to leave the motion as it stood before the amendment. The two, there's three sections of added language. That seemed to matter very much to some of the people here, but I don't understand why that's such a big issue, so I wonder if somebody could explain what the difference between the existing language and the new proposed language does in actual practice.
Mr. McGoldrick.
To describe what this would do and the reasoning behind this, is that the interplay of this definition with other definitions, primarily ground floor and primary entrance in the existing zoning bylaw, could be used in a way that it makes it unclear, or providing that lack of clarity in relation to where that ground floor and the exterior exposure residential and commercial interplay is. What this does is this removes that interplay of those definitions, specifically referencing the exterior exposures, which are within the jurisdiction of the planning board, rather than the specific ground floor or other floors within a structure which are not in the jurisdiction of the planning board.
Further questions on the amendment? Mr. Segelnic.
John Segelnic, Precinct 2. I kind of have two questions. The first one is, the amended motion changes the definition, is this wording inserted somewhere else in the other 15 pages that we're not asking to be deleted, which means it would still take effect if...
Hold on one second, John. Mr. McGoldrick.
It is not. These are the two references within the existing motion.
Second question, John.
The second question, I think, my impression is, there's a lot of problems with the words of any one exterior exposure. I guess I'm not sure what that understands. Is that the way the building looks from the exterior? Or is it the entrance and exiting, in terms of having only one entrance and exit from a development, as opposed to basically every other development I'm aware of has multiple entrances and exits?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So that strikes mainly to the issue. It is taking away the reference to entrances, the primary entrance. The exterior exposure has a specific definition, but simplifying that, it is the exterior shell of the building. So you will only be allowed on one, when facing a building, one exterior shell or face of the building to have commercial and residential. But that one side of the building will not necessarily affect the opposite side. So again, when we talk about allowing and promoting multi-level mixed-use at a smaller scale, it allows you to have those units behind.
Sufficient answer, John.
One quick question.
Go ahead.
So it refers to the face of the building, the statement?
The, it references the exterior exposure, which is the specific language that we're proposing to introduce, rather than entrances or ground level floor.
I still, what's the exposure mean, the building itself?
The outside wall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zikos.
I think I can answer that for you, John. These five words reference what is the first floor of, most specifically, the Town Center District. So when the town incorporated the Town Center District, in an effort to encourage mixed use, they decided that the best way to do that would be for people to redevelop existing sites or build new buildings, but to have commercial on the ground floor, also known as the first floor, the floor you walk into from any side, the left side, the right side, the back, the front. Now, what we're trying to do, in an effort to circumvent the legal proceedings on Beal, is say, well, we can allow some housing on the first floor, it doesn't have to all be commercial. So what you're doing is you're increasing the density, you're allowing more housing units. So in the instance of Beal Commons, they took a small percentage and made it commercial, and then, because the profitability was necessary for the developer, they added more units on the ground floor, which is in violation of the Town Center District. Now, keep in mind, the Town Center District was multiple hearings over an extended period of time extensively vetted, unlike this particular change, which by town officials' own admission, was never even mentioned at the two public planning board hearings. You saw no slides with respect to this zone change, and you saw no maps with respect to this zone change, because they wanted you to see nothing. This keeps it the way it is, it is the least, least risky method to proceed, it leaves a clear and level playing field for everyone to, in essence, pick this out of a hat because they want to spot-zone part of the center of town and declare that it has to do with the MBTA District. It does not. And the reason we know it doesn't have to do with the MBTA District is because 90% of the space that we're talking about in the MBTA District, there has been an expressed interest in preliminary proposals for. There are two developers for those proposals. Neither one of those developers has requested commercial space on the first floor. So it's just a shell game. The intent of this was to overcome any deficiency on Beal. Let's leave it alone.
Well, let's get back to this. Any further comments or questions with reference to Ms. Flynn?
I would just like to speak from my perspective as a select board member. There is zero accuracy in the accusations that Mr. Zikos is making, and I would personally like for the town manager to respond. Was any of this related to the litigation regarding Beal, or was this in response to our initial plan was mandatory mixed use? We removed the mandatory mixed use, but we wanted to still invite mixed-use development where we could to align with our strategic plan of economic development. Please defend our position here.
Mr. Mizikar.
I'd be happy to say it again. We went through this process, we started with mandatory mixed use when we developed this zoning. As we went through mandatory mixed use, we saw the opportunity from what came up throughout the Beal permitting process to make this clarification. This initiative is not because of Beal, it's because we think this zoning clarification is important to the town's bylaws.
Further comments or...
Follow up? Actually, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. We have a motion before us.
Jim, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
So just to follow up that point, I want to talk, this isn't about Beal, this isn't about Mr. Mizikar. There's no better public servant than Mr. Mizikar. He has worked for us since he's been here in 2017. There is no public servant in our Commonwealth that's more transparent, continuously with his goals, reaches out, wants office hours for members of the community. You don't need office hours to go talk to him, and everything that he does is above board. I think as a community, it's important, and Mrs. Dearing said this earlier, it's important to have dialogue discussion, but not personal attacks, here or social media or otherwise. As a community, that's not who we are. It's good to have debate, we can agree to disagree, but let's do it in a way that's not impugning character. Can we change from that? But let's not have it be about our town manager here, who, there's no better in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
The gentleman near the aisle.
Steve Fishman, Precinct 6. To get back to the amendment that's in front of us, which is what all this is about, can we, is there, first of all, is there any material change to the overlay district if we take out this language tonight?
Mr. McGoldrick.
So there is no direct regulatory impact, but as has been stated, there are foreseen potential economic and clarifying impacts in terms of the definition.
Okay, so we can pass this tonight, we can pass the overlay district tonight, or we can vote on it tonight, regardless of whether or not we remove this amendment. And this amendment, the wording that's being referred to, to be removed, can be added in again later, because it sounds like this is where all the debate is happening. So can we get back to her, her proposed amendment, to have this removed and address this at a later date?
That's what we're on.
Good, that's why I'm hoping we can move away from this debate about Beal and about this wording, just get it removed, we can have this debate about Beal at a later date.
Further comments or questions on the motion before us? Not hearing or seeing any, we will move to the motion to amend the referenced section and striking the proposed changes. Is everyone clear on that? Okay, then we'll call the vote. This requires a simple, wait a minute, what? Okay. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the proposed amendment shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The chair is in doubt and will move to a standing vote. Tellers, could you please take your positions? Hold on one second, we got a point of order.
What does a yes vote mean, and what does a no vote mean?
Of the motion or this?
This.
This, very good, I'll explain that. That's why we're moving to a standing vote. The clarity of that was not sufficient for me in all, in all honesty. So those in favor of the proposed amendment will vote yes by standing at this time. So if you're in favor of the amendment, please stand. Please remain standing so that the clerk or the tellers can secure the vote.
16.
25.
22.
Please sit. Everyone, I would now ask those who are in opposition of the proposed amendment to rise.
13.
12.
Thirteen.
In this, on this matter of the amendment, we have ninety-one in the affirmative, seventy-three in the negative, the amendment is adopted. We now go back to the underlying language of Article Nine. Further comment or questions with reference to Article Nine? Yes. Hold on one second.
Patricia Minton, Precinct Seven. I did some quick math. Don't quote me. So you're saying there's fifteen hundred apartments, five hundred are covered already, so we're going to have like a thousand new residents potentially, correct?
So from the presentation, the district comprises approximately one hundred and eighteen acres. The modeled capacity at fifteen units per acre is one thousand five hundred and twelve units. This is under the minimum capacity required by EOHLC, which is one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven units. Five hundred and eighty-eight units already exist within the district. Therefore, the net new units, precluding any 40B development proposed or approved at the fifteen units per acre is nine hundred and twenty-four. If that private development follows through on the four hundred and ninety-eight units which are approved or proposed, the net new units is further reduced to four hundred and twenty-six.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Minton?
Okay, so we're going to have a thousand new people. That's a single person. Then people are married, so there's husband and wife or different, if people have same-sex partners, whatever. And then they have families, that's two kids. Where is Shrewsbury going to get the money to pay for a new school? Because Beal is going to be overpopulated, and it seems like that every two years now, instead of every four, we are doing an override for something. We are going to be proposed an override in April so we can get a twenty-seven million dollar garage. I'm just thinking long-term, and I think that the community should focus on enticing businesses rather than building all these buildings. It's too much.
Thank you. The gentleman up along the aisle.
Jesse Shaw, Precinct Four. So just to clarify, so the initial estimate was four hundred and twenty-six new units with, I think, roughly five hundred going into the 40B that is proposed there already. So it's not a, we're looking at only four hundred and twenty-six in addition. I think this is to Mr. McGoldrick, I think, just wanted to clarify that position.
So the four hundred and twenty-six units is nine hundred and twenty-four minus the four hundred and ninety-eight, which are proposed or approved through the 40B process currently, but not yet built.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, just a clarifying point from before that what, it's not a thousand units. Yes, it's a thousand units in addition to what we have, right? But it's only four hundred and twenty-six that we're talking about right now, because the 40B that's proposed is already in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I'd like to share my opinion. Oh, Deb Delgado, Precinct Eight. The state needs more housing. Shrewsbury needs more housing. And everybody that needs more housing does not have a spouse or a child. There are elderly people that need apartments because they can't take care of a house or can't afford a house. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Petrucci, Precinct One. I want to move the question, please.
Motion has been made to move the question and seconded. That moves to immediate debate, excuse me, immediate vote. All those in favor of moving Article Nine shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will now move to a vote on Article Nine. Article Nine as amended stands before this board. A simple majority is required. All those in favor of Article Nine shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. It's adopted. Article Ten. What's that?
It's ten fifteen.
So you don't want to get going? Ten thirty is the limit. Hold on, hold on, one thing at a time. My understanding of the rule is ten thirty, and we'll talk then. Until that time, we can start something. There has been a desire for standing vote, and are there seven people with the individual asking? One, two, three, four, seven's there. Very good. We will now move to a standing vote on Article Nine. All those in favor of Article Nine are asked, hold on, the tellers need to get in position. Tellers in position? Okay, all of those in favor of Article Nine as amended by this body are asked to stand and remain standing until the tellers get their counts. What's that? All right, please take your seats. With the tellers back in position, I will now ask those who are in opposition to Article Nine to please rise and remain standing until the tellers take the vote.
Eight.
On this matter, one hundred and twenty-three stood in the affirmative, fifty in the negative. Article Nine as amended stands. It is passed. Article Ten. Article Ten this evening is a result of an initiative petition. The petitioner, who I believe is up in the corner, will be asked to join us down front, please. He is not a member of town meeting. So as you know from your pink sheets, there is a motion to be made at the top of the pink sheet. Would a town meeting member consider making a motion in this support? Yes, sir?
I move the printed motion provided in the handout to town meeting members entitled Article Ten Proposed Motion.
Very good. Is there a second? Okay, very good. Motion has been made and seconded, so the initiative petition is now before us. Good evening, sir. You have a presentation. Feel free to start.
Okay, thank you. My name is Greg Richards, and I'm here representing the other one hundred and eighty-five fellow residents who signed the petition for Article Ten. I'd like to thank the moderator as well as the town manager for allowing me the time here tonight to present directly to town meeting members who are making this decision this evening. You know, if you look at why a citizen's petition, you know, a few years ago, the town we went into and we developed a twenty-three, thirty strategic plan. One of the key initiatives of our twenty-thirty strategic plan was to be a more engaged and connected community. One strategy under that specifically was to expand interest in engagement with Shrewsbury's boards and committees in hopes of building stronger relationships between the town government and residents. You know, a key role of residents are to be agents of positive change, you know, to draw areas of attention, of concern, and provide solutions when necessary. You know, petitions are that mechanism to bring ideas of change to a broader audience and allow this legislative body the opportunity to decide what they feel is best for the community. One of the things I'd like to mention, some of you may know, I do a show on Shrewsbury Media called The Unselex, and the only reason I mention it is because after we started doing the show, we get a lot of feedback from the community. And a lot of that feedback is pretty consistent. You know, residents share that they're concerned with ongoing developments in town and the impact to the character of Shrewsbury and their quality of life. You know, they're frustrated with feeling like they're not being heard when the people provide feedback and opinions to our appointed leaders. And they're troubled with potential future developments that may prevent them from staying in their homes due to an increasing tax burden. You know, what do all these items have in common? You know, that feedback? Well, majority of it's related to planning and development. You know, I myself have participated in a lot of planning board meetings. I've attended them relating to the MBTA Communities Act as well as the warehouse projects. But let me be clear, you know, this petition is not about a single outcome. It's really about a series of decisions and a pattern of behavior. You know, I look at the planning board, and I'll take a step back, that really has two roles. I think Mr. Sammy had referred to the planning board as analogous to the judiciary, right? Which I think he's half-right. There is a form of where they're making decisions based on our bylaws. You know, however, you know, Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One, actually says there's another aspect of the planning board. The planning board is actually responsible or involved with master plan development, which identifies goals and policies the municipality has for its future growth and development. The board's also responsible for zoning amendments. You know, what we voted on this evening and other town meetings, they're brought through that planning board. The planning board is the one who's crafting those along with our town planner as far as what's brought in front of this body. You know, they do some community studies, you know, prepare plans related to resources, needs, and development opportunities. And those public hearings we talk about, you know, that public input is used to gather input from residents about what we should be doing as a community. You know, those are effectively policy-setting functions. You know, why is it important to highlight the policy-setting functionality of our planning board? Well, one of the comments that Mr. Mizikar has made throughout this process and in the finance committee meeting and the select board meeting is that the elected individuals in positions within our community are necessary, but those tend to be on policy-setting side, not on policy-executing side. So a lot of the focus in those hearings was around this article, was that the planning board is really just executing policy. Well, I have to say that there is that aspect, but there's also a very high responsibility about setting policy as well, which, you know, tends itself to lend itself to elected positions, just as a town manager had indicated. So what are some of the alternatives to what we're doing today? You know, in those planning board meetings, I watched, you know, as residents came up and really shared a lot of concerns about the impact to their quality of life, specifically around the warehouse project. Now, especially at the end, the second-to-last planning board meeting, the planning board continued a public hearing. All the residents in attendance thought they had another opportunity to come back and share some additional thoughts and concerns before the planning board process was completed. However, on that last hearing, before public comment, the planning board closed the public hearing, not allowing those residents' voices to be heard. Now, I've heard a lot of feedback on that and said, you know, residents had a lot of opportunity to be heard. There was multiple meetings where they could share those concerns. However, when you're not validated and you really feel like your voice isn't heard, you tend to repeat yourself. You know, so I decided at that point, there must be a better way. And what I actually found out doing research is the town of Holliston had a very similar warehouse project that was in front of it, but they made a very different decision. They were able to deny that warehouse project. Now, how did they do it? Well, that planning board in Holliston is elected, and just because you're elected, I'm not suggesting you don't follow your zoning bylaws. The town made a purposeful choice in that elected board to change and craft zoning bylaw changes to give them more control over what they could and couldn't develop in town. One of those being what they would allow for warehouses, what they allow for special permitting. So that collaborative approach between the planning board, the planner, and town council allowed them to make different decisions. Here in Shrewsbury, a lot of developers have brought in articles in front of the planning board into town meeting where we've changed zoning bylaws to benefit those developers, sometimes without a full understanding of what the impact will be to our residents. Having an elected board would allow the accountability to be a little bit more to the voters, and there is a balance between development and existing residents' concerns, but elections and campaigns, you know, will allow us to bring that awareness to planning and development, how it really impacts our community. So the other thing to note is that there's one hundred and forty-six towns in Massachusetts with planners. A 2018 survey of Massachusetts planners found that seventy percent of those communities had elected boards. Only thirty percent were appointed, so Shrewsbury in the minority. All of our surrounding communities, Northborough, Southborough, Westborough, Grafton, Millbury, Westboylston, all have elected boards. More specifically, there's thirty-two towns in Massachusetts that have a representative town meeting, like this body is here this evening. Twenty of those towns also have an elected planning board. Only twelve do not. You know, the reason I bring this up is, one of the concerns, I think Mr. Mizikar had in the warrant article preview, he stated that, I quote, you know, "There might be an inherent conflict between elected bodies should the planning board stray beyond what the responsibilities would be." But I don't think this conflict really manifests itself as there's twenty other towns who would have the same model we would, having an elected planning board and an elected town meeting. And even if there were conflict, conflict is a necessity, and it's part of teamwork and innovation. Conflict and disagreement lead to problem solving. You know, how do people with differing opinions come together if all viewpoints are not represented? I actually spoke with a select board member who used to be the chairman of a planning board in a neighboring community, and I asked, "And all the time in select board and planning, have you ever had a conflict with either the select board or planning board?" And he just said, "It just didn't happen." So why should we ultimately change? You know, the town of Ipswich in 2017 was looking at a very similar article to change their planning board to elected, and they did some research and talked to a lot of towns that had both appointed and elected boards. And with appointed boards, you know, a lot of the feedback is that the residents feel there's unclear accountability. You know, if you don't agree or not happy with the performance of a board, you don't have a lot of recourse to change it. And secondly, the process of appointments is foggy. You don't know who applies, what criterion are being used to make those appointments, and it leads to a lot of frustration. You know, a lot of residents have shared with me that a lot of people don't apply to positions because they just perceive that they wouldn't have a chance of being selected because they might share a different viewpoint on a specific board. You know, I do know that there's, on the other side of the equation, you know, people have shared, and there's been an example, actually, a member of the Personnel Board at the Finance Committee mentioned that, you know, they were concerned about moving to an elected board because, you know, they weren't comfortable. They were introverted and were afraid that they wouldn't be able to serve if they had to run. They weren't supportive of it. But on the flip side, in Grafton in 2017, their planning board chairman had indicated that he was concerned when, if they moved from an elected board to an appointed board, that the select board would not choose him because he shared a different point of view. So I think there's a balance to look at there. Lastly, appointed boards often get stale, right? People serve on these boards for a long period of time, and there's really no means to make change. You know, one of the members of our planning board has been on the board for twenty-six years, and a lot has changed in Shrewsbury over that time period. You know, I know change is hard, and many fear change, you know, and a lot of those comments I've heard are, you know, "We've done this, we've done it this way for seventy years." You know, that can give us a sense of stability, especially when fear of change and disruption is present. But if we think back to the pandemic and all the changes we had to do just to survive, you know, adaptation and change are pivotal to a success. You know, the "we've always done it that way" mentality can really create resistance to change and could stifle creativity and innovation. But lastly, you know, there was concerns about participation at our local elections. You know, if we... You know, if we moved to an elected board, the concern was we wouldn't have people looking to run. But since 2017, Mr. Mizikar indicated he's made eight appointments on the planning board, and 26 different people have actually applied. So there's a lot of interest in the community to be, to serve our planning board. He also mentions, in those planning board selections, he's making intentionally diverse selections in a group. However, the elections would allow for diversity of thought, diversity of background, diversity of vision, and even of lived experience. And sometimes those are overlooked when we're making appointments. There's another fear about that planning requires a technical skill set. Now, while I understand there are some technical skills there, you know, Data Town shows that 65% of Shrewsbury residents have a college degree or higher, many in advanced technical fields. But I would argue that you don't need an advanced technical background to serve on our planning board. You know, people can take time if they're interested to understand something, and they can educate themselves, and we have support resources through the planner as well as our town council. So, you know, what happens, I guess, when people also ask, "Well, what happens if people don't apply or there's open positions?" Well, Mass. General Law states that if an elected planning board member is vacant, the Select Board would make that decision. And since the Select Board is an elected body, they're more accountable to voters. So, in closing, this article really set out to ask this body, if we as a community value power and control over self-governance and community engagement, you know, ultimately it's your constituents that should decide, as they are the ones who ultimately govern this body. So I thank you and welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the opportunity to provide some comments. So, it is my opinion, based upon our form of government, that the plan of, the planning board should remain appointed because of its role within the overall system of government. Shrewsbury was an early adopter of local government reform in comparison to many other cities and towns. Shrewsbury was among a handful of communities in the early 1950s that moved to the use of appointed officials to improve the efficiency of our executive branch operations and remove political influence. The reform efforts led to the adoption of the Representative Town Meeting Act and the Selectman Town Manager Act in 1953. The primary driver behind all of this was the growing complexity of the town, which at the time had a population of approximately 6,400 and an annual budget of a million. Striking, only roughly 35% of Massachusetts communities have fully embraced the Home Rule Charter by adopting a locally-defined governance structure. The remainder rely upon a patchwork of Massachusetts general laws and local bylaws to define rules and rules. Next slide, please. Before enactment, the town operated through 15 elected bodies or individual elected offices, with those elected being responsible for the appointment of staff. This is a very... I think we can continue, given the hour. I appreciate that, though. This system was very siloed and disjointed. Next slide. After the act was passed, the most notable change was the reduction of elected bodies or individual elected offices from 15 to 7, with a streamlined option to move two additional positions, the town clerk and the treasurer, from elected to appointed. Additionally, the town manager position was created. This system combines the strong political leadership of elected officials with a Select Board specifically designated atop the municipal side of operations with strong professional experience of an appointed local government manager. Next slide. I know this is nearly impossible to see the details, but needless to say, the town has continued to evolve based upon the needs of its population, and this is the functional organization that we operate under today. We have continued to move in the direction of having more appointed officials responsible for executive function. In 1960, the treasurer's position was changed by town meeting from being elected to appointed by the Select Board, and in 2006, the town clerk position was changed by town meeting to also become appointed by the Select Board. Next slide. There is a clear balance of power between the executive branch and a defined legislative body. Moving in this direction amplifies the power of voters through the consolidation of accountability to three elective boards, the Select Board beholden to voters for all municipal executive branch responsibilities. Municipal authorities further balance ensuring both responsiveness to voters through elected officials and professional technical expertise in carrying out the day-to-day responsibilities. Next slide. When deciding whether local government officials should be elected or appointed, communities need to evaluate several key considerations. There's certainly a balance to be found, as both roles are critical to the success of local government. Public engagement and responsiveness is a responsibility of appointed officials, just as technical knowledge of elected officials leads to better outcomes. Therefore, communities must assess these factors against their own unique needs. Often cited principles for appointed rather than elected include the following: limited policymaking responsibilities, primarily performing responsibilities largely guided by laws and regulations, and requiring specialized qualifications to perform the functions of the position. Next slide. The planning board should remain appointed because of their responsibilities most closely aligned with an appointed body. Appointment provides several advantages that support effective land use management and community development, specifically, the ability to select members with appropriate specialized knowledge associated with the responsibilities of the board, creating a diverse group who provide broad perspectives that result in balanced approach to carrying out their responsibilities. And appointed boards are more insulated from political pressures than elected boards, which may be subject to campaign influences and short-term voter demands. This independence helped planning boards maintain a long-term view and make decisions that serve the community's broader, future-oriented goals. Planning boards with appointed members are better positioned to uphold regulatory standards without the pressure to appease voters on a conscientious zoning or development matters. The proponents of this petition have cited extensive work by the town of Ipswich, which I agree is noteworthy. And the most important part of that is that the study recommended that the planning board continue to be appointed. Next slide. I'd like to talk a little bit about how I make appointments. The Town Manager Act requires that I shall appoint on merit and fitness alone. Petitions are advertised upon a vacancy notice and at the end of any given term. Applications simply fill out a form or submit a resume. I'm committed to meeting with all applicants who apply to be appointed. Therefore, the first time someone applies for an appointment, I interview them. Interviews are normally conducted with the lead staff member, mainly a department head that supports that board. For the planning board, I specifically consider the background of the individual as it relates to the requirement of the board, the skill sets of other sitting members, and the needs of the board generally. As previously stated, since becoming town manager in 2017, I've appointed eight individuals to the board. There were 37 applicants, 26 unique individuals for those eight appointments, averaging nearly five applicants for every advertised opening. There were multiple candidates for all vacancies except one in June of 2020. Current members' tenures range from one month to 26 years, and the average tenure of the board is 6.18 years, or slightly longer than one five-year term. Next slide. My final comments. In my opinion, it's beyond ill-advised to look to alter the form of government simply because a minority does not like recent outcomes. Maintaining the integrity of the system is more important than reacting to temporary discontent. This system has been in place since 1954 for 70 years, and I challenge anyone to find a community that is thriving better than Shrewsbury. Recent outcomes include applying zoning bylaws that are set by this body to redevelop two deteriorating commercial sites, Lakeway Commons and Edgemere Crossing. Further, the long-term perspective was held, enabling the successful development of Centec North, now home to two pharmaceutical industry businesses. It takes thoughtful and well-balanced system to produce these outcomes. The proposed change is not minor, and it will risk those outcomes that town meeting desires. To reiterate, the town's critical land development policies are set by town meeting, not the planning board. The planning board works within the confines of the zoning bylaw that's adopted by town meeting. Finally, I just want to reiterate and acknowledge again, the work that Ipswich did resulted in them upholding the planning board being appointed. I will say the Shrewsbury system of government also meets our needs, but it needs to be put in the proper context of the rest of the state. There are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts. According to a 2022 census data, Shrewsbury is the 41st-largest population in the Commonwealth. Of the 40 communities that are larger than Shrewsbury, only two have elected planning boards. The work of the planning board aligns with the characteristics of an appointed body, especially in communities like ours. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I draw town meeting members' attention to the piece that was handed out at the desk and that was subject to the gentleman's motion and seconded. Comments or questions regarding the initiative petition, Article 10? Ms. Hollenbeck.
Melissa Hollenbeck, Precinct 9. I appreciate you bringing this forward. A few years ago at town meeting, I brought forth a citizen's petition for us to study, to have a commission on commissions, as everyone called it. Mr. Mizikar did not support that at the time, nor did the town meeting members. But it brings back around a project that I've been talking about for the past 10 to 15 years, that Shrewsbury needs to have a charter review. Most communities have gone through what they call charter review every five to 10 years, basically to take a deep dive into their town organization, their town government, to see if that is the best for their community. We've never had one since 1952. As you said, a lot has changed since then. We are, I'm not saying that we're doing this because anything's wrong or bad. We all go to the doctor every year, or we should be, all those other exams that we have to get as you get older. A town, you know, government should be no different, that we should kind of review it at all times to see if it is sufficient. There has a lot that has changed. Most notably is our population, and our demographics have changed dramatically, and the world around us has changed dramatically. So, I'm gonna, and, you know, I know how hard it is to stand up there, but I'd like to have everyone vote no on this, and actually work with our Select Board to get them to consider having a charter review, and then maybe a town meeting in the spring. We can do that. Not only would we be looking at the planning board, we'd be looking at everything to see if, you know, basically it's just good housekeeping practices that other towns do. I don't have any stats or facts on it, but it's just something that I think we're long overdue. Thank you.
Further comments and question right across the aisle.
That's Shay Bryant, Precinct 8. I have had the distinct luxury of running for townwide office. I've been appointed to two boards, and I have applied four times for other boards. I've lived in this town for 53 years, and I'm gonna admit, I'm pro-town government. May not be the most popular approach tonight, but I am. So, I have the same viewpoints as a town manager. And my first board was by Dan, that I got appointed to, was by Dan Morgado. The other four were Mr. Mizikar. My last appointment to the board was done by the Board of Selectmen. It costs a lot to run a campaign. When I ran for townwide office, I did have to raise between $5,000 and $10,000. It takes time away from family, home, and work. All votes are important, and I know, Mr. Richards, you made the comment about digital outreach to people. Not everybody has that access, and everybody has the right to get information on a candidate and to have, be able to have that interaction with them. I also, if I may, Mr. Moderator, ask Mr. Mizikar, the applicants, the applications for the planning board, public?
Mr. Mizikar.
They would be subject to disclosure under the Public Records Law, yes.
Were they pulled before this, this article came up?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Moderator, I do have some comments I'd like to make, but first I'd like to raise a point of order.
Yes, sir.
Article 10 in the warrant says, "To see if the town will vote to change from an appointed planning board to an elected planning board by changing Section 3 and Section 2 of Appendix B, Chapter 59 of the Acts of 1953," to read as follows. And then, in the warrant, we have language. We have a motion before us tonight, which has an item, Section 2.1, planning board, which does not appear in the warrant article. So I would kindly ask, I'm sure I'm missing something, how is this motion appropriate?
Certainly. The gentleman achieved the standard of an initiative petition by securing a number of, of signatures consistent with the act. In conversation, and particularly after hearing the presentation of Mr. Mizikar at the Finance Committee, he understood that it was less than a perfect initiative petition. So you have a new item tonight, which was moved and seconded, which is, if you will, perfected, in quotes, that has the intro that asks the town to do, ask the Selectmen to do something, and then the 2.1 that is the way to deal with this in the event the body were to send it to Boston and Boston approved it. So I would have referred to it as a substitute motion, but there was not a motion in the book. So therefore, what you have this evening is the motion to move a enhanced initiative petition. And it is my opinion as moderator that the bold up front and the bold to the rear is certainly within the intention of the gentleman who secured the initiative petition.
Well, thank you for your explanation. I respected, I respectfully disagree.
Very good.
I do not feel the town meeting was properly warned of what we are going to be asked to vote on this evening because of the wording of the warrant article. Absent that, I would like to make some comments.
Please.
I'm delighted that we got to this article this evening, because actually, I can't make it tomorrow night. Ironically, I'm teaching a class at Tufts on government, and I think I've just decided I'm changing what I'm gonna speak about tomorrow night. I have a great case study to bring to them. But, I don't really believe there's an absolute right or wrong answer to the question that's before us. I believe it's a personal value judgment. In addition to the presentation made by the proponents this evening, I listened multiple times to the Finance Committee public hearing on the article. The prevailing theme that I heard throughout is that the petition article came about largely through dissatisfaction by the proponents with planning board decisions particularly regarding two recent development projects, warehousing on Clinton Street and Beal Commons. And I also heard they were frustrated, feeling at times they are not heard when they provide feedback and opinions. Based on the numerous public hearings provided for testimony, I think all were given ample opportunity to share their opinions and feelings, and I think the planning board heard them. I think we are here because the proponents disagree with the decisions that the planning board recently made on contentious issues, and that they believe that an elected body would have decided otherwise. This evening, and also at the Finance Committee hearing, there were references made to a development in Holliston in which the elected planning board addressed neighborhood concerns to their satisfaction. Now, the inference that I took away from that was that having an elected, rather an appointed, planning board is why that occurred, and I wonder if that's why that happened. Shrewsbury's very different than Holliston. Most obvious is we are a community of almost 40,000 people. Holliston is a community of almost 15,000 people. There are a lot of differences between the town of Shrewsbury and the town of Holliston, both wonderful communities, besides the fact that one has an appointed planning board and one has an elected one. I do note that the zoning bylaws established by the respective town meetings in the two communities are far from identical. I also wonder, would an elected planning board be as likely as an appointed one to take on an extremely controversial issue that might threaten members' reelection intentions or possibly even greater political ambitions? I recall, and many of you do as well, that several times, four times exactly, the appointed Shrewsbury planning board proposed bold changes to the zoning bylaw to change minimum lot sizes that would have resulted in significantly less development. sizes that would have resulted in significantly less development in this community. That proposal had a tremendous amount of public support. It also had a great deal of opposition. And four times, the town meeting rejected those proposals. Would an elected planning board be as likely to take on such politically sensitive issues? As I mentioned as I started, I don't think there's a right or wrong to this question. I do believe it's a personal value judgment. However, I do think one direction is much more beneficial to the overall interests of the community. And based on my experiences as an elected official in Shrewsbury, and also as a town administrator in a municipality with an elected planning board, and after, I guess I'd say, compulsive observation and review of what municipalities in this state, how they operate, I've been doing that for decades, I favor the appointed planning board model. I believe it is the model that best provides for the means for the planning board when it considers a development proposal to carefully take account of a butters and neighbor's concerns, along with those of other residents and property owners, that they'd be mindful of the zoning bylaw established by town meeting, and come to a decision that is in the best interest of the entire town, and do so without the opportunity for direct political pressure to be applied. I plan to vote no on Article 10. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Fritz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sandra Fritz, 21 Pheasant Hill Drive. I live off of Route 20, and I've been a town meeting member for over twenty years. I've voted on a lot of these zoning articles, and for me, again, I don't, like Mr. LeBeau, it's really a personal issue, but when I've reached out to the planning department, to Mr. McGoltrick, to anyone, they're very happy to give us the information we need, because our area of town is being affected quite a bit with a lot of different developments, some we've already had, some building now. So we do have questions, and I've always gotten the answers that I wanted. However, when I've gone to the planning board and I have spoken, I do feel that there isn't answers, or there isn't strong dialogue and discussion in front of us as just town residents. And to me, that was my concern as a town meeting member and as a town resident, that there, the planning board's fine, but it would be nice to have some of our questions addressed there. That would just be my advice, is I would keep them as appointed, but I would like to see, as somebody who has dealt with that quite a bit, a little more dialogue around what the residents are asking, and some of our concerns, to actually be debated and discussed in front of us. So, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Yes, Peter Collins, and then right down front in the middle, rather.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Peter Collins, Precinct 4. Just a question, Mrs. LeBeau kind of brought something to mind. So, the premise that if we changed the planning board, that it being elected would somehow, I don't know, not cripple it, but, you know, make it so, if there was some controversial thing going on, that they may not want to address it, or address it properly, I'm wondering, as a former elected official, if, you know, serving on the select board, if that were the case, when you were a selectman, would, you know, was the select board ever shy to take on a controversial topic because they were afraid it would not get elected, or it may, you know, hit their future political ambitions?
Is that a rhetorical question, or would you like me to ask?
I would, I guess I would just like, yeah.
I can tell you, I used to be on the Board of Selectmen. I never voted thinking about the following may. I can only speak as one former member, Peter.
That's my experience with most of your votes, yeah. So, or all of your votes. So I'm, you know, I just don't, I don't think that's a kind of a valid reason not to do it. And I, the other thing that I've, you know, I've listened to Mr. Richards multiple times, and some of the other folks in the town, I think one of the issues that they're having with this particular planning board, and it's kind, the topic has come up, is that it seems sometimes like initiatives brought forward by residents to change zoning, to do other things, don't get the backing that initiatives brought forward by developers do. So it seems like a lot of zoning has changed at the request of a developer, versus at the request of, you know, the citizens, and I don't, you can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I think that's one of the issues that comes up. I, you know, I've been on the other side of the desk from the planning board, I did it with Home Depot. I always thought they were respective, respectful, you know, they made the decisions based on what they thought was the right thing to do. Sometimes I feel that they move forward a little enthusiastically when they don't know all the facts, and there was things at Home Depot, for example, that they didn't know, and they didn't know that they didn't know them. So, you know, but I think that could happen with an elected board as well. I'm neutral in some things. I don't think it's a bad thing that we move forward with an elected board, but, I don't know, I think that the boards generally do a really good job.
Very good. If you could hand the microphone down further. Yeah, just toss it right up. Thank you.
San Amzaire, Precinct 7. I have a question that may seem unrelated, but I tried Googling it, and I couldn't find it. In the town of Shrewsbury, are non-citizens permitted to run for local office? I'm talking about green card holders, taxpaying, green card holders that own properties in Shrewsbury.
You have to be a registered voter.
You have to be a registered voter. Okay, so to provide some context, in the state of Massachusetts, currently, non-citizens are not permitted to vote in local elections, even though non-citizens are homeowners, they're paying taxes, they are sending their kids to schools and doing these things. I'm bringing this up because appointments provide the opportunity for non-citizens to sit on local boards, whereas elections may prevent non-citizens from doing that. And I think this is applicable in this particular situation, because we have a large number of green card holders in the town of Shrewsbury. I lean towards what Ms. Hollenbeck had proposed earlier, to do an evaluation of our full election process. I think there are, I think the spirit of this, I actually agree with the spirit of the citizens' petition. I think that our elections are flawed in some ways. For example, the incumbent being bolded and put as the first name, I think, shows a lot of bias towards incumbents. I think that a, you know, if we go through and really look at everything, we may find a lot of these inequities. But, that was my question, and.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Yes, right along the aisle. Ms. Miller, I'm sorry. These lights come right over the glasses.
Oh, how quickly we forget, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Moira Miller, Precinct 1. So first, I'd like to thank Mr. Richards for his presentation and for bringing these concerns forward. What I understand from your presentation, which I watched at the select board meeting via Shrewsbury Media, and again here this evening, is that this article is meant to address concerns some residents have relative to a series of decisions and a pattern of behavior by the planning board. These residents feel that the planning and development process is flawed, that they are not given adequate time or opportunity to share their concerns, and that their input has little to no impact on the final decision. People question or don't understand the board meeting procedures, public hearings, the opportunities and format for public comment and feedback. They feel there needs to be a better communication to residents regarding how development projects and related zoning are brought before the board. In other words, and this has been mentioned tonight, developer-driven versus resident-driven. It's my observation that the Shrewsbury Planning Board does a good job listening to resident feedback and working to balance the needs of all sides, as they consider zoning amendments and develop plans, and development plans. But at the end of the day, they must rule by Massachusetts law within the four corners of the rules and regulations that govern their jurisdiction. And in Shrewsbury, that body is the town meeting. When these rulings do not align with the position of project opponents, then it's human nature, I think, for some to feel that they have not been heard. Whether we agree with that perspective or not, the truth is that perception can often become reality. So, if that's the problem you're trying to solve, the question is, is changing from an appointed to an elected planning board the solution? And I would argue it is not. Our current structure is not broken, it just needs some tweaking. Many of the concerns expressed can be addressed by improved processes and procedures for how the board operates, and improved methods for communication with residents. And while it may sound like a simple solution, changing to an elected board can have unintended consequences on the stability and performance of the planning board. Some advantages of keeping an appointed board: The town meeting continues to have approval over zoning amendments and changes. The planning board enforces these policies, as opposed to communities like Holliston, where elected planning boards make policy. The board continues to perform their designated administrative responsibilities in accordance with state laws and town regulations. They don't have the political pressure elected officials often feel and may have relative to reelection that could increase the town's risk for legal action based on approval or denial of projects deemed as arbitrary and capricious. The learning curve for a planning board can be steep. Board members need to learn the rules and regulations, be able to effectively communicate, and know the right questions to ask. In an appointment, the town manager can require these specialized qualifications to best perform the functions of the position. Like many communities, Shrewsbury has challenges getting people to volunteer, whether elected or appointed. But the manager can work to ensure a diverse pool of candidates for appointment to better reflect the community. Low candidate participation and voter turnout in town elections can lead to little or no competition for positions. And finally, as a general rule, I think it's not good policy to make a major change like this to the governance structure without study and careful consideration of the pros and cons and potential long-term consequences. This petition article has been good for raising awareness and driving discussion, but I will not be voting for it this evening. I suggest that if town meeting should want to move forward with a change of this scope, then a town committee or commission could be established to review and report back to this body with recommendations.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference? Yes, right behind Mr., yes, right there. Kathleen, how are you this evening? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm Kathleen Cohane, Precinct 3. Kathleen M. Cohane, Precinct 3. I was a town, I was on the planning board for fifteen years, I've been off for a while now. During that, before I was appointed to the planning board, I served as a town meeting member, I was on the master plan study committee, the fiscal study committee, I was on the central mass regional planning board, and I was committee, rather, and I was on the executive board there. So, you know, I had some decent qualifications for it. Every member who gets appointed to the board brings in a particular expertise that they have, that you don't get when you have an elected board necessarily, necessarily. One of the other things is I, we went to a lot of training done by the Citizens Planning Collaborative, and I got a Level 2 certificate in the process of that, which lightens the liability insurance for this town. When we would do that, people who were in the elected boards would say how lucky we were to be appointed, because they felt, in opposition to what you've heard before, that elected boards are more responsive and have more things. They found that instead, people who were elected often had a particular axe to grind or a specific thing that they wanted to do, they would come on the board, and then they would leave. So, I just want to throw that out. I think what Mr. LeBeau and Mrs. Miller said were more eloquent than I could speak of, but one of the other things I want to point out is I see a defect in the changes to Section 2, where it talks about how, at the annual election, they will vote for somebody to serve a term for five years, one for four years, and so on. So I don't know if the intention is to have separate votes for five, you know, separate votes for different people at different terms, or whether the intention is to have it done like what we do after a census, where it depends on how many votes you get, how long your term is. So, I could let it go through and see what the AG says at the end or not.
Would you like to respond, Craig?
Thank you.
Certainly.
Am I allowed to go backwards a couple people to respond to, or it'll be quick?
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Well, and the reason I wanted to mention that, I like the dialogue, and I, like I've said, and I think you've seen emails, you know, I think part of this process was engagement of the citizenry, and I just want to make a comment, and I hope you don't take it the wrong way, Ms. LeBeau, but when citizens try to get engaged with boards, and I think Ms. Miller also mentioned the same kind of thing, what the intention was, but the first comment is, what you provided is wrong. You made a conscious effort to engage with the community and with the government, and you want to find fault. I've never seen, in this body, and I've attended a few meetings, I've watched a ton of town meetings, not just with Shrewsbury, I've never seen a town meeting member stand up and say, "You know what? What you wrote up there is all wrong." You know, "How dare you bring this up here?" And that's the perception of why people don't get involved. It's that attitude of, you know, I understand you were a select board member for a long time, you get the process, just like the planning board people, they get the process. Those of us who don't are looking for help, right? That's what we want. We don't want to be ridiculed or talked down upon. We want assistance, and we want to engage in the community, and we want to be welcomed in. And that's what part of this was about, right? It wasn't about, you know, I mean, part of it was about what the experience of the citizens was, and how do we get more engaged? And that's the part we want to be embraced, because, you know what, I'm not gonna get deferred. You could comment on every petition I bring up here, and if I bring more, I welcome you to try to attack it. You know what? I learned a lesson, right? I should have talked to Mr. Mizikar earlier, but I tell you what, when I went back and had a conversation with him, he was extremely helpful to try to craft that motion, right? And he tried to help, and I understood what the deficiencies were, and even Mr. Kane, not once did they ever bring up that there was an issue with it, right? He, I mean, I should say that. He mentioned he had concerns, but they tried to help me work through it, right? And were very helpful. But that's the frustrating part, is when I get that kind of feedback, right? So, I had to go down that path. I apologize, and I don't want to seem like I was, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, it's just, I just, my perception of being up here in front of everybody, right? Which isn't easy. So, the other comment about Holliston is, I know the decisions can't be different. I get that. We're not asking people to disregard bylaws, but the reason why those bylaws were different is because of the process that they went through. People always go back to town meeting and say, "You know what? Town meeting, right? They're making the decisions." Well, the process that we put in place, how do citizens, I think it was mentioned by Mr. Collins, right? How do citizens get voice through that process? Because there's a ton of barriers that are put up, right? Ton of barriers. If I went to Mr. McGoltrick and said, "You know what? I think we should change a whole bunch of hazard right zoning to special permit," we'll have a conversation, I'm sure of it, but if there's a reason why there's disagreement, it's not easy to get that through. If I was a member of the board, which I will admit, I applied for the planning board, right? I did. I didn't make it. That's not the reason I did this petition. I started this before that, right? That wasn't the reason. And I would have run anyway, right? If I would have had the opportunity. But, I just think it's important to understand that. Back over here, and I'm sorry if I'm all over the place, the intention of the election was that all members would be elected at that first election, and then they would have staggered terms, five, four, three, two, and one year. That was the intention. In practice, how does it work based off the number of votes? I don't know. Right? I, you know, and that's where I kind of use the guidance of the town, because I don't know. And as a citizen, it's hard to know. I mean, I've read our bylaws, there's a lot of things that are difficult to understand, but you try to do the best you can, you know, as a citizen up here trying to be engaged.
Thank you. Mr. Campanello.
Paul Campanello, Precinct 6. I'd like to move a question.
Motion has been made to move the question on Article 10 and seconded. We will now go to an immediate vote. All those in favor of moving Article 10 All those in favor of moving Article 10 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now go to a vote on Article 10. Just to remind everyone, it's the pink sheet that was presented this evening, consistent with the motion provided. It requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 10 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. Town meeting members, we have before us this evening four articles that remain. However, the time is now 11:10. So in accordance with our procedural practice, we may not take up a new matter after 10:30, unless town meeting agrees to do so. So, this room is available tomorrow night, if you'd like to come back and spend some time with us. Or perhaps you could accept my procedural motion to continue moving on and dealing with Articles 11, 12, 13, and 14. Does the body want to stay and complete its work this evening?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. Article 11.
I move the printed motion under Article 11.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 11 by a vote of 6 to 1.
Okay. Point of order has been called, yes? If you would like a quorum call, we can certainly do one. I can't hear you, I'm sorry, Peter.
Oh, a mic. Peter Collins, Precinct 4. Yeah, it may be a good idea, Mr. Moderator, because a lot of people seem to be leaving, so.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, whatever we do, that, you know, we don't do it inappropriately.
So, Madam Clerk, it seems to me that we should have the tellers... First of all, lock the doors. Secondly, secondly, I think the tellers need to go sticker by sticker by sticker to make sure we have a quorum now that it has been questioned. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Tellers, everyone with a sticker, please make sure the tellers can see it. So we're doing a quorum call right now to make sure we have numbers sufficient to carry on business. We have a quorum. We are now proceed... We had the Finance Committee, Mr... Excuse me, it's not Mr. Mizikar. Where is the Chair of the CPA? Deb Mooney, would you please come forward, and you will now present on the remaining articles. Good evening.
Good evening. I should have brought coffee. And I thank Mr. Moderator, and good evening, town meeting members that are still awake. I am Deborah Mooney, Chair of Shrewsbury's Community Preservation Committee. And on behalf of my fellow committee members, the at-large members, Vice Chair Jason Molina, Clerk Melanie McGee, and John Seglenek, our Conservation Commission Representative, Martha Gage, Historical Commission Representative, Gail Aslanian, Planning Board Representative, Steve Rodelakis, Housing Authority Representative, Kathy McSweeney, and Parks and Cemetery Commission Representative...
Hey Deb, could you project a little more forcefully, please?
I'm tired.
You can do it.
I know you all are too. On behalf of the whole committee, I'm grateful for the opportunity to give you a very brief overview of the work of the CPC, and to ask you to join us in supporting Articles 11, 12, 13, and 14. As you know, the Community Preservation Act was adopted by the town of Shrewsbury by a vote of the majority of voters in 2020. The committee was established in 2021. We are one of 200 communities across the Commonwealth that have adopted CPA. Our purpose is to fund projects related to the quality of life in Shrewsbury through local funds matched by the state. We consider projects related to historic preservation, open space and recreation, and affordable housing. What we can and cannot fund is determined by legislation established by the Community Preservation Act. These projects that we will present to you are proposed by residents, town governments, local nonprofits, community groups. Every single project goes through a preliminary application process to determine eligibility. If it's deemed eligible under the Community Preservation Act, the applicant is then invited to submit a full application for funding. The committee thoroughly reviews the applications and supporting materials. We evaluate the purpose of the proposal against the goals outlined in our annual community preservation plan. We invite the applicants to make presentations at our monthly meetings, and we hold public hearings to hear from other community members about the proposed projects. The projects presented in Warren Articles 11, 12, 13, and 14 have all been thoroughly vetted and considered by the Community Preservation Committee. The applicants have met with CPC multiple times, and public hearings have been held on each one, also multiple times. In the case of Articles 11, 12, and 13, these are projects proposed by the First Congregational Church of Shrewsbury. We additionally consulted with the Community Preservation Coalition Resources and Town Council, who reviewed the anti-aid amendment to ensure that these projects were eligible for consideration. Because the First Congregational Church was the first meeting house of Shrewsbury and is considered such an important historic asset to the community, they weren't deemed eligible. The Community Preservation Committee takes its responsibility to be good stewards of these funds very seriously. So it is the opinion of the CPC that these projects, which are up there, meet the criteria set forth by the Commonwealth CPA legislation, align with the goals of Shrewsbury's Community Preservation Plan, and are a good and prudent use of our CPC funds. And we hope that you will agree. I am not going to read you the slide, because you're all adults and can read it yourselves. But Article 11 is for $25,000 for the First Congregational Church for lighting a restor to... They brought it to us after the steeple in Sterling that got hit by lightning and the church burned down.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Not hearing or seeing any... Whoa, 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 sorry. Gentlemen first, or no? You were helping Donna, very good. Ms. O'Connor. Right there.
Thank you. Quickly, I think the CPC does an incredible job. They work very hard. Unfortunately, I will say this once for Articles 11, 12, and 13, I oppose because it's a private entity, it's a church. We didn't vote for the garden at the India Center. I didn't vote for it for the same reason. I also believe that if we go forward with voting for this, does that mean other churches should come forward and say they are a part of history of the town? The first meeting place actually was demolished and is not a part of this building? And should someone else in the historic district come forward and say they want their house painted, or they want their trim fixed? So I oppose 11, 12, and 13. Sorry.
That's fine. Just by way, a reminder, town meeting members, and Gail, you can go next, we're not taking these as a bundle. We'll do each one. So we're on Article 11. Ms. Aslanian, to your left.
Gail Aslanian, Precinct 1. I just have a couple of thoughts, primarily on historic preservation, since I do serve on the Historical Commission and am representative on the CPC. Many... I'm going to read this, if you don't mind. "Many religious institutions' projects have been funded with CPA historic preservation funds across the Commonwealth, with projects ranging in size from small, discreet repairs to complete rehabilitation. Churches played an integral role in the history of Massachusetts and are also often local landmarks. Many houses of worship continue to serve broad community needs, providing space for public uses, use in activities such as daycare centers, musical events, scout meetings, adult education classes, and the like. CPA funds can be a critical factor in successfully preserving and restoring these important historic community assets. New England is known for its historic villages, which traditionally include a church and town green at their center. In addition, churches are often designate... Designed by noteworthy architects and builders in the most fashionable styles of their time, and provide some of the best examples of period architecture in the region. Historic churches are often community icons, used as points of orientation and as centerpieces of illustrations and photographs. As an example, our congregational church appears on our town seal. The question is often asked about whether the use of public CPA funds for private religious institutions is allowable. The Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court in 2018 established specific guidelines that communities must follow when considering providing CPA preservation funds to active religious institutions. Town Council has reviewed the applications and concluded that they passed the anti-aid amendment. There's been some concern, as expressed tonight, from... That funding these articles will lead to CPA monies going to other private historic property proposals. CPA funding for private properties is unlikely, for they would first need to show public benefit. The First Congregational Church, however, does pass this test. It was written in the Merrimack Valley Magazine in regards to a north-and-over CPA-funded church project, and I quote, "This church is an anchor for the historical section of town. When you see that steeple, you know you are in a historic New England town." So my question tonight to the community and to this body is simple. What is our commitment to historic preservation going to be? We have witnessed many a historic building fall, so do we want to take the risk of losing the most iconic building in town? Historic preservation is a partnership, and we have the ability to partner in the most important way, by supporting Articles 11, 12, and 13.
Further comments or questions on Article 11? Ms. Harrington. I think, yes, yes, yes.
Maureen Harrington, Precinct 1. I'm so tired, sorry. Synapses are not connecting as well as I hoped they would. So, you know, I read through some of the guiding principles and priorities of CPC, one of them being to provide maximum benefits to the community. So, starts to beg the question, does this provide maximum benefits to the community? And my answer to that would be no. The second question I have is, is there a reason why the funds are not being taken out of the account for the historical buildings versus the unrestricted, undesignedated fund?
Ms. Mooney. Oh, Mr. McGoldrick.
Chris McGoldrick, Director of Planning Economic Development. So the funds for the historic portion, which is the set aside that are required to be used for those projects, is projected to be at a minimum, and so we need to utilize the undesignedated funding account to fund this project. So that's the 65% that's left over after each of the other buckets are appropriated.
Follow-up, sure.
So, you know, as I'm seeing it in the very nice document provided, that we've pretty much deleted the funds in the historical account with all the projects that we've funded so far. We've yet to touch anything in the housing account, and you want to go to the undesignedated fund to dip into this for funding a church project here in town? Is... Do I understand that correctly?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Actually, may I, Mr. O'Drake?
Sure, go ahead.
We're required by law to reserve 10% of our budget in each open space recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. We can reserve more if we wish, but we chose as a body to keep the rest unrestricted so that we have the greatest flexibility based on what the public tells us in our annual public meeting, seeking feedback, and to make decisions based on the projects before us. We are hoping to have an affordable housing project soon. Any of the funds that are reserved, and we don't expend it, it rolls over to the next year, where we don't have an affordable housing project yet, but we hope that will be soon.
Follow-up, please.
All set?
Just one additional follow-up or just comment. I'd love to hear what the Finance Committee, there's been no mention of their vote on this and their disagreement with funding this project, so I'd like to hear from them as well.
Pick her up.
Thank you.
Is the question related to Article 11?
11.
So we recommended it by a vote of 6 to 1. One of the... I mean, I will just go into some of the issues that did come up during the discussion. The... An issue that came up was basically that the church had sources of funds from the cell towers, and that they should actually, perhaps, use those funds to fund these projects. And that was related to many of the other articles as well, which are not under discussion at this point.
Okay, thank you. Yes, right in the middle.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7, also super tired. Question, the common, the town common, that belongs to the church, right?
Depends who you ask.
Depends who you ask, okay, okay. Oh, there goes my lemonade. I'm sorry? The deed says the church, okay, okay. The town and the church seem to be in sort of a symbiosis over that space, and have been as long as I've lived here, since 1980, whatever. And it is, I think, probably the only building in town that is iconically Shrewsburyan, other than Spags, which is now gone. So I think that we are thinking about this maybe not in a way, the way that we should be. I was in Paris just before Notre Dame burned down, and that's their First Congregational Church. And the way that people reacted to the loss of that landmark, because it was such an integral part of what it means to be Parisian, is something that I think we need to take in mind when we look at the First Congregational Church. I don't worship there. I don't... I know people that worship there, but I don't personally worship there. I don't... This is not going to benefit me in terms of where I go on Sunday morning and what I do. Usually I'm in bed or making pancakes for my kids. But I think in terms of what it means to be from Shrewsbury, to be in our center of our town, this building means a lot to that. And I think not supporting it, to preserve it so that we don't end up like the Parisians, would be a misguided thing for us to do.
Comments or questions from someone who has not spoken this evening? Well, Ms. Deldato, you've only got one under your belt.
Deb Deldato, Precinct 8. I just want to share that the First Congregational Church was founded as a meeting house for our community. And we are a central, or they are a central hub. There are 28 neighborhood groups that are hosted in that building. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, AA, et cetera, et cetera. The Troop 114 is chartered by FCC and one of the oldest and largest troops. It was chartered in 1916, and it has currently over 100 troop members. And they use the building. So there are no structural icons or religious symbols when you go into the building, so it is a meeting house for the entire community. And it is maintained by generous gifts from members. And unfortunately, there are so many needs for a meeting house this old, that it's just not realistic to expect that type of money, and so we applied for this consideration. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Yes. Right in the middle.
Rajapal Party, Precinct 4. I believe there is a cellphone tower on top of it, and every cellphone tower comes with a lightning arister, so I believe they should be installing it.
Okay, you have a question, sir, or is that a statement?
Yeah, it's a statement. I mean, it should come with a lightning arister already.
Okay.
I mean, it is integral part of every cellphone tower.
Deb, hold on, hold on.
I think.
Sorry, are you asking a question? I don't know about cell towers, I'm sorry.
Yes, have they checked with the cellphone companies?
Deb, did anybody reference checking with the cell company?
Actually, Ms. Deldato could probably answer that better.
Ms. Deldato, why don't you rise and answer the gentleman's question, given your unique position on this?
No lightning arresters in the building.
Okay, thank you.
From my, from my personal experience, I've worked on cellphone towers, and they come with lightning arresters.
There's none there, so I'm sorry they didn't come with them.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions on, yes, along the aisle. You, yes, yes, yes. Right up.
Lee Abdallah, Precinct 6, and I'd like to move the question.
Motion has been made and seconded to move the question. We will move to an immediate vote. All those in favor of moving the questions shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to Article 11. Standard, simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 12. You want her to move? Move it. Motion under Article 12, sorry. That's okay.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend Article 12 by a vote of four to three.
Anything to say, Ms. Mooney?
The CPC just determined that this was part of protecting and restoring the building. It, that was our decision at the time to protect this asset.
Very good. Ms. Whitean?
Carol Swydan, Precinct 6. I feel that this is a maintenance issue that the church should be handling. Even though they say it's historic, I agree with what was said previously, that anybody else could come and say, gee, I need maintenance on my historic building. And I know we're not doing the following one yet, but I don't agree with that one either, for the same reason.
Further comments or questions on Article 12? Yes. Melissa, I'll get you next, Missy.
Hi, Sanam Zahar, Precinct 7. I just have a question for the Community Preservation Committee. Were Articles 11, 12, and 13, were these the only current proposals on the table? Like, is this the best of the options that you guys had? Or was this the only one that was being discussed with, by the committee?
We had actually a couple of others. One was deemed ineligible, and, and I'm so sorry, I'm not remembering the details, because it was months ago. And then there was another that we decided fell into the realm of maintenance rather than protecting historical asset.
Okay, so just.
So we don't say yes to everything that comes there. For an historic, historic building, it must be deemed historic, first off. It's either has to be in the National Historical Register, or the local historical society must say that it's of importance. It cannot be for maintenance. It can be to protect, or to preserve, or restore.
Okay.
And we thought this meant that.
Just one quick follow-up. So is it fair to say that this is currently the only proposal on the table that's viable for the Community Preservation Committee?
These were the ones that, we decide on each one as they come, and up to this deadline, these were the only ones that we decided were eligible, and that were, we deemed worthy of supporting.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hollenbeck.
Lisa Hollenbeck, Precinct 9. So when we, we're talking about the maintenance and all this kind of stuff of the church, I agree with Ms. Azlanian, and, is, sorry, name, DePaul. Is, you know, these churches are iconic. This is our identity when you come to Shrewsbury. I'm totally one of these people that are against church and state. However, this building has another purpose. It is historical, it serves as a community center, all these things that everyone has said. The other thing is that we need to consider is, you know, saying, oh, the church can pay for it. Church attendance in really pretty much any, any churches is declining. They're not having the revenues that they used to, so in some communities, churches are now becoming part of the community, as a community building, or that's officially the community center. So it, it, I, you know, implore us to support this building, because at one point, it might actually be a town-owned building, you know, I'm not saying the church is going to go out, but the thing is, we need to help preserve this, whether it's, you know, with the trim, which can lead to water damage and all this other stuff. It's just such an iconic part of Shrewsbury, and that we really need to keep and help it with all that they need.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 12? Mr. Bovier?
I'd just like to move a question.
Oh, okay. The motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second?
Yes.
And there's a second. All those in favor of moving the questions shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We'll now move to Article 12 for a vote. All those in favor of Article 12 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Ooh, that's a no. That does not pass. Article 13. 13.
Mr. Sinead, would I like to move it, or would I?
I move the print-in motion under Article 13. Very good.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend Article 13 by a vote of five to two.
Anything to say?
Many of the historic preservation projects require a study to figure out if it's even feasible to do the restoration work, and that is what this, this project is. It's a study to evaluate options to restore or repair the original wooden floor in the meeting house.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Mr. Schatzke, how are you?
I'm very good, Mr. I'm moderator.
Good.
Dale Schatzke, Precinct 7. I spent a lot of time on that wooden floor in the 60s as a Boy Scout, and later on as an adult Boy Scout leader. And I can tell you that that floor was wavy and spongy back then, and I can understand why an organization like the church wouldn't find the funds to do a study like this, because they don't know what they're going to find. And it's a problem that needs to be solved. I should say that when I first looked at Articles 11, 12, and 13, I said, no, private church, forget it. I'm not good with that. But listening to the committee meeting, the Preservation Committee meeting, and the presentation at the Finance meeting, I was convinced that this is a, is in the best interest of the town to help this, help understand the problem and possibly look at a solution which would help preserve the building to the benefit of the entire community.
Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Yes, the gentleman in the aisle.
Andrew Heisen, Precinct 6. I'd simply like to know why the Finance Committee is not recommending this article as opposed to another Article 11 that you did.
Very good. Vickram.
As I mentioned, it was a vote of two to five, so it was definitely split, and there were, there were conflicting opinions. So one of the ones that I already mentioned was basically that some members felt that the church had sufficient funding opportunities to do this on their own, and there was also concerns related to the, to the amount of money being designated. And as far as people who voted for, it sort of resonates with some of the opinions that have been said, as far as the iconic nature of the church. Even if it has a decreasing number of people going to it, it has a defining presence for our town. So as I, as I mentioned, there were conflicting opinions, and that's why we have a split vote.
You satisfied, sir?
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Right out along the aisle there.
Mike Lebry, Precinct 3. Has the church determined, done a pre-survey into regards to the floor, that is indeed at least structural in nature, and not just a floor, a subfloor?
Do we have any information on that, Ms. Deldato? Are you in a position to answer that?
I don't have information on that, but there might be someone back in the lay group that might know that answer.
Do, okay, yes, sir. Would you please identify yourself?
I'm Skip Burnett, live in Precinct 8. I'm a member of the church, and I'm a volunteer on the Building and Grounds Committee. And we do have blueprints showing how the floor was constructed, and it is right on ground. There is no support system other than timbers sitting on gravel, and that's all we know. We don't know how to repair the floor or to reinforce it.
Thank you. Is the gentleman satisfied? Go, go ahead with your follow-up.
Just a follow-up. I think that survey to determine that could be done for a lot less than $10,000, to have an opinion done by a structural engineer, to at least, if there's nothing bearing on the floor, now I'm not a structural engineer, but if there's nothing bearing on the floor, and it's more filler in nature, and it's not holding up the building, I don't think it's in, you know, in good interest for the town to spend $10,000 to find that out. Maybe a little money upfront to determine that, and then proceed.
Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to Article, yes, Deb?
I just want to share that this study, architectural study, is one that the CPC did fund for the Shrewsbury Historic Schoolhouse. So it's very similar, and those were the quotes that we got. So, you know, in order to do this, and to do it thoroughly, that's what we have to do.
Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? The gentleman, oh, no, Ms. Azlanian, behind, I think it's her.
Just a quick, Miguel Azlanian, Precinct 1. Just a quick comment, and, Mrs. Mooney, you can correct me if I'm wrong. As point of information, for those of you that aren't familiar with CPA, many times these projects come in as estimates, or these proposals are estimates. And when the, when the actual work is done, any funds that are not spent go right back into the CPA fund. So although this may be $10,000, when the work is actually done, it could be, it could be less than that. If it's more than that, then the church would pick up the difference, or they'd have to come back to us for more money, which we probably wouldn't approve. So it's not like we're just spending money frivolously, because whatever doesn't get spent, just like overages of, you know, money's not spent on the, on the school, on the Beale School, or the police station, or any other place in town, that money goes back into the CPA fund. So it's not money thrown away.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Ms. Whitean?
Carol Swydan, Precinct 6. Just a quick thing I didn't say before. What if they find that this is really a major issue? Does that mean they'll come back again to fix it? And then it could cost tens of thousands of dollars.
Ms. Mooney, do you have an answer for that question?
Back, there's no guarantee we would say yes.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Mr. Collins.
Hi, Peter Collins, Precinct 4. I, just, you know, to get a little history, I was speaking with the, I think it was the pastor of the church, and, you know, the congregation itself, I guess, started in And it was four years before the town was incorporated. I asked her why that, you know, why, you know, they started, it was right after. She goes, well, the reason that the town was 1727 was in the early 1700s, and I did Google this, when the towns, bodies like ours, were deliberating on how we were going to organize the towns, and there was a town meeting back then, and Massachusetts and New Hampshire, I guess, for some reason, kept really good records of town meetings back then in organizations. But one of the things that you had to organize was a meeting house. This site was that meeting house. So not only is this an icon on our town's seal, it's there because the original site was where we were founded. So I think that's significant. I think we should pay, you know, tribute to that, because people like us in the early 1700s were making these decisions about how our town was to be born.
Further comments or questions with reference to, yes, sir. I'll go right over to you afterwards.
I agree with a lot of what's been said, you know, it's a very iconic building and love walking by it. I am concerned that we're going to become the de facto landlord for this thing without owning the building. But are the applicants expected, when they apply, to disclose any kind of their financial health as to why they need additional funding?
Yes. If it's not a town department, we do ask for operating budgets. We ask for, we ask for their bids or quotes on a project. And we do due diligence on our own. We visit sites, or we do research if applicable.
A gentleman against the wall.
Neil Evering, I call a question.
Motion has been made to move the question and second it. All those will now move to a vote. All those in favor of moving the question shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to Article 13. All those in favor of Article 13 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Ooh, I'm going to say that's a no.
We want a standing vote.
Sure, we can have a standing vote. Well, let's say it's seven people who want a standing vote. We do have to follow the rules. Okay, seven, more than seven, very good. Okay, tellers, take your position. We'll now do a standing vote. Will all those who are in favor of Article 13, please rise and remain standing?
22.
12.
19.
Please be seated. Would all of those in opposition to Article 13, please rise and remain standing?
14.
12.
17.
14.
Okay. On this matter, 73 in the affirmative, 57 in the negative, 13 passes. I'm sorry to announce that we have our final article for this special town meeting. Article 14, is there a motion?
No.
Finance Committee.
recommends Article 14 by a vote of seven to zero.
This is simply
Ms. Mooney.
the continuation of a project that we voted to fund at the last town meeting, but due to a procedural error, we did not vote to give them enough money.
Article 14. Is there a motion?
No.
Finance Committee.
recommends Article 14 by a vote of seven to zero.
This is simply the continuation of a project that we voted to fund at the last town meeting, but due to a procedural error, we did not vote to give them enough money. We had the money in the budget, but we had it wrong in our motion last time. This is to complete the project and correct it wrong.
Questions regarding Article 14? Yes.
Hanlon, Precinct 10. I am a scout parent, and this weekend joined about 50 Cub Scouts, and Boy Scouts, and female Boy Scouts at Mountain V Cemetery to collect flags from veterans' graves, and there is a large number of headstones, historic headstones in the cemetery that are in terrible condition and need to be restored, and many of those are also veterans' graves, grave headstones. So I fully support this article, and I hope everyone would join me in that.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 14? Not hearing or seeing anyone. All, we'll now call the roll, it's a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion has been made and possibly seconded to adjourn. Thank you all very much.